Hello.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in the City Hall Council Chambers. At this time, I would ask Mary Ann Barnaby, Vice Mayor, to give us our invocation, and we'll do the pledge after that, if we please stand.
Please join me in our invocation. Good and loving God, our source of love and light, thank you for bringing us together today. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite. We ask for your wisdom and grace. We ask that you help us use our talents for the betterment of others. And with gratitude, we offer this prayer in your name. And together, let the people say, amen.
Join all veterans in the audience with the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Good morning. Our first proclamation this morning is Farm City Week, November 9th through the 23rd, 2024. According to the 2022 sentences for agriculture compared to 2017, there was an 8% decrease in number of farms in Manatee County. In 2022, the percentage of farms that are farm, family farms in Manatee County was about 90%, and about 30% of producers were new and beginning farmers. And whereas, this year's Farm City Week celebration will highlight Raising for a Reason, No Farmers, No Food, and will honor the efforts in Manatee County to educate our youth to be able to take on the many important roles in agriculture and to highlight the importance of farmers and farmland for our food production. And whereas, Florida 4H is the youth development program of Florida Cooperative Extension, a partnership between Manatee County Government and the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences. The participants learn technical skills in agriculture, science, health, and civic engagement with the mission to help youth gain the knowledge and life skills they need to be productive and responsible citizens. And whereas, Florida FFA Association is an agricultural youth organization preparing members for leadership and careers in science, business, and technology of agriculture. And whereas, the Farm City Week Committee supports this year's thing by contributing to educational opportunities for students. These activities include Ag Venture, where Manatee County 4H educates over 1,200 Manatee County youth in agricultural awareness, essay and speech contests, and Beef Workshop and Prospect Show, preparing youth to show their livestock at the Manatee County Fair. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, is Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, to hereby proclaim November 9th through the 23rd, 2024, as Farm City Week, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of providing opportunities for our future youth to learn the basic principles today so they may provide the resources tomorrow. Sign, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Who do we have coming forward?
We have a real farmer and a real rancher coming. That's what we got.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I want to thank you for recognizing Manatee County Farm City Week. I am Patty Keen-Fried, and I am a proud seventh-generation Manatee County native and your 2024 Chair for Manatee County Farm City Week. Farm City Week celebrates the partnership between agriculture and urban communities to emphasize the importance of farming communities and raise awareness about food productions direct linked to local agriculture. This year, our theme is Raising for a Reason, No Farmers, No Food. Without farmers, there will be no food, and without teaching our youth the importance of keeping local agriculture at the forefront and its importance to understand sustainability practices and realize how food production impacts their communities and their environment. Farmers and ranchers don't just provide food, but they also help maintain green space, wildlife habitat, and freshwater recharge areas. A little bit of our lineup this year. We start out this year on Saturday at the Bradenton Farmers Market. We'll have some 4H and FFA kids down there. They'll be selling some goat soap. They'll have some animals down there to interact with the community. On Monday, we will salute our veterans in the Veterans Day Parade in Palmetto, and we'll be joined by some FFA students there. On Wednesday, November 13th, we will induct Mr. Walter Council as our 2024 Ag Hall of Fame Inductee. He was a lifelong Manatee County farmer and native. He was the first Vice President and Charter Member of the Palmetto FFA Chapter in 1939. He served on the Manatee County School Board from 1954 to 1966, and he was a U.S. Navy veteran from the World War II. This year, the luncheon will be at 12:00 p.m. at the First United Methodist Church of Palmetto. We've had a little venue change this year due to our little friend Milton. If you're interested, please let me know or reach out to me, and I will get you the Eventbrite link. It is a free event, but we do, we do recognize the reservations, so we know for food. At the luncheon, we will also recognize our Manatee County School Essay Contest winners and our Manatee River Soil Water Conservation District Essay Contest winners. This year, we had to switch the Conservation District Essay, or Speech Contest to an Essay Contest due to the storms. Thursday, November 14th, will be our Farm Tour. This year, the tour will go to McKeithen Farms, Taylor Cattle and Citrus. They'll do lunch at Blackbeard Ranch, and then to Mariposa Nursery. We do have a few seats left on the tour. The Eventbrite does close today for the tour. And joining me today is one of our tour guides, Mr. Buddy Keane, our 2014 Manatee County Agricultureist of the Year, our 2022 Manatee County Distinguished Citizen, and most importantly, my dad. Tuesday, November 19th, we will announce this year's Manatee Agricultureist of the Year at the Bradenton Kiwanis Meeting at the Manatee Players, and I hope that you will join us there, as many of you do. And I want to thank Bradenton Kiwanis for being there, for their continued support of Manatee County Farm City Week. On Wednesday, November 20th, this year's Leadership Manatee Tour will have a jam-packed tour, actually. They will go to Fiorelli Winery, Deacon Dairy, Taylor Cattle and Citrus, GND Farms. They'll have lunch at Dry Prairie with the Speaker being Ms. Angela Collins, Mosaic, Ellington Nursery, and returning back to Fiorelli. Once again, the tour guide is Mr. Buddy Keane. Also, on Wednesday, the 20th, and Thursday, the 21st, we have made Ag Ventures two days to open it up to more schools. So this year, we will host approximately 1,200 3rd graders at the Manatee County Fairgrounds for Ag Venture, where they will learn about different aspects of agriculture, such as making butter, learning about forestry, learning that eggs, milk, and butter don't just come from Publix. It is truly a wonderful event to watch the children learn and experience. We will wrap up our two weeks of our Farm City Week with our Beef Workshop and Prospect Show on Saturday, November 23rd, at Manatee County Fairgrounds, where 78 youth will show their 80 animals and learn about marketing and products. Once again, I want to thank you for recognizing Manatee County Farm City Week, and I hope to see you at some of our events. Will you take away your coffee mug?
You have to say Ralph Garrison's famous line.
Never speak poorly of a farmer with your mouth full. I have been trained well.
All right, any questions? All right, we thank you. Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry.
I just want to attest to Buddy Keane's ability as a tour guide. A couple of years back when-
Stay up here, Buddy.
Yeah, when I first came here, him and Ralph and one of the owners of the co-op took me out for the better part of a day, and they taught me a lot of things about agriculture and farming here in Manatee County. They taught me what the slang was for people that work in the city. You're right. And, and gave me a great education as far as production farming and the meaningfulness of it, the history of it here in the area, how it's transformed, and it really did help me understand a lot more about how, you know, governments can, can help or hurt agriculture. And it was eye-opening, and I really appreciate him taking the time, and Ralph and everybody else are good friends.
So, let's get a picture. If you guys want to stand here, we'll stand behind you, and everybody grab their glass, their coffee cup. We'll hold that.
And there's candy.
With candy.
I don't need any candy.
No tomatoes?
Yeah, no vegetables, so we had to bring candy.
Hold your coffee mug up.
Oh, sorry.
I can't wait for that picture.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next proclamation this morning is Register Your Emergency Contact Information Week, October 14th through the 19th, 2024. Whereas, the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles Emergency Contact Information Program allows all individuals with a valid Florida driver's license or identification card to voluntarily provide emergency contact information online at www.flhsmv.gov/eci or went in an office to apply for a driver's license or ID card. And whereas, registering your information in the state of Florida's award-winning ECI program is a highly effective way to enhance the lives of Floridians by providing contact information to law enforcement officers during critical emergencies. And whereas, to inform Families First, or TIF, was created by Christine Olson after losing her daughter Tiffany in a fatal motorcycle crash in 2005 to ensure law enforcement officers have the information they need to notify loved ones when emergencies arise. And whereas, the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles and TIF have joined together to encourage all licensed drivers and ID card holders to register or update their information, which is stored in a secure database used only by law enforcement agencies. And whereas, many states, including Alabama, Arkansas, Colorado, Delaware, Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, Minnesota, New Jersey, Ohio, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, Virginia, and Wisconsin, have joined the state of Florida in their endeavor to provide immediate contact information to families during a critical incident. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 14th through the 19th, 2024, as Register Your Emergency Contact Information Week, and urge all citizens to join the 20 million registered Floridians participating in this program to ensure all families can be notified if an emergency should arise regarding their loved ones. Sign, Jean Brown, Mayor. And we have a short video to show?
Yes.
What if you were involved in an emergency and law enforcement didn't know how to reach your loved ones? Three easy steps can make a difference. Go to toinformfamiliesfirst.org on your computer or mobile device. Enter your driver's license number, followed by who you want notified. In the event of an emergency, law enforcement can make notification in minutes. It's just that simple. It takes less than two minutes to register your contact information. Do it today. Your family is counting on you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, I could still cry. I want to introduce everyone to my daughter. So you know, this is not done in an office or anything. This is my daughter Tiffany Marie Olson, who was killed on impact December 7th of 2005. She was out to dinner with her boyfriend on US 19 and 49th Street, and a drunk driver ran a stop sign and killed her on impact. I'm jumping ahead a little bit in my little notes, but that's just the way it is with a mother that is always grieving, and that is the key word, always grieving. So first and foremost, I just want to thank Jean Brown for doing this. This proclamation means an awful lot to me and for believing in me. We meet regularly, and he sits down as a friend sits with a friend and talks over the ideas that I present to him. I also want to share, thank Sheriff Rick Wells. That man has been so instrumental in my life. He is my biggest advocate, really my only financial supporter. I get no finances for this, no nothing, no volunteers, no nothing, but I have a determination. But that man is my friend. So almost 18 years ago, a careless act took my daughter Tiffany Marie Olson from my life instantly. In a blink of an eye, she was gone. I will never see her marry, and I will never see her have a baby. Almost 18 years ago, I found out the hard way how long it can and will take law enforcement to reach and notify loved ones in an emergency. For me, it was six and a half hours. My daughter was 15 minutes away. By the time I found out, she was already at the morgue. The national average is six hours nationally. Think about that with you and your families. 18 years ago, a thought came to me, wondering, what if we could add emergency contacts to a driver's license or a state-issued ID? But to driver's license primarily, because that's all my daughter had on her. She was on the back of a motorcycle with her boyfriend Dustin Wilder, who also worked, whose father worked as a detective for the Sheriff's Department, and they were just going out to dinner. There was never alcohol or drugs or anything involved. They were just going out to dinner. But that's all Tiffany had on her was her license. 18 years ago, I took and shared that idea. Now, I was a server for 22 years at the Rodden Real Pier, which is no longer that, you know, from Milton, but I had no education in government or law enforcement or bills or anything like that. I was a mom that seen firsthand what can happen and what will happen. So I took the simple idea, not knowing if it would work, to State Representative Bill Galvano, and I remember it well. He looked at me, he said, "Oh my God, this is amazing." He then took it to Florida Highway Safety Motor Vehicles in Tallahassee, Florida, where the state of Florida's then person heading up the office, it's not coming to me right now, but they responded with, "Why haven't we done this? We're doing this immediately." Six months later, Tiff was born as the solution to helping law enforcement know who to contact in an emergency. October 2nd, 2006, I, Christine, was the very first person ever to add emergency contact information to a driver's license at Bill Galvano's office. I believe you have the picture in front of you. I was scared to death because I was not computer illiterate, or I was computer illiterate. I didn't know what I was doing, and all the cameras are on you. It's never been done. And there, they said, "Okay, start typing," but they're looking, and I'm scared. And we put the information in, and they all watched, and they said, "All right, hit enter." And I did, and I was number one. Now, today, over 20 million people are registered in the state of Florida. Over 20 million. That's hard for me to grasp, but it's true because the state of Florida works very hard at this. Law enforcement works hard at this. My mayor works hard at raising awareness with this proclamation. Hopefully, this doesn't fall on deaf ears. And 18 states have followed this example of Florida in their own state that I'm aware of. But I'm not done. October 2nd, 2026, will be my 20th anniversary, and I'm doing everything in my power to take Tiff's initiative nationally. So no one ever experiences my horror or the national average of six hours to be notified in an accident or emergency. And if you think, this isn't children or first-time drivers, this Alzheimer's, this is special needs. The state of Maine reached out to me, and their crisis is overdoses. We have no way to contact families when their kids are overdosing. So this is for every single person in my brain in the world, and it's up to us to get this information out. It is also a huge tool for law enforcement because, as you've seen in the video, once you've registered, when they show up to the emergency, law enforcement simply takes your license, scans it, and it says, "If I'm hurt, contact this person on my behalf." So with this proclamation, starting stating October 14th through the 19th, there might be a little stipulation on that. This picture right here is our Skyway Bridge. The third week of October, Florida Department of Transportation lights that bridge purple in honor of my daughter. Is that amazing? The United States Coast Guard takes me out by boat, their boat, to see the bridge from their vantage point. That blows my mind, but they said they are honored to do this because they know how relevant this program is. So the third week of October seems to be the week the state of Florida honors this program every October for the full month. But I'm asking everyone in this room, make sure that you register and/or update. You all have bracelets. The deal with the bracelets, you put them on, put them on, because we're going to get a picture. And you cannot take that off until you make sure you are registered and/or updated. And I'm going to take one second to speak on the importance of updating. My brother Bradley just recently died. He had went through a very trying life, and he died in the state of Tennessee in a hotel room. Because he was registered with Tiff's initiative, in Tennessee, law enforcement ran my brother's driver's license and were able to contact his family in Florida, named after my daughter, and it happened to her uncle. So this is very relevant, and I just thank you. If anyone in this room has any interest in coming in, meeting with me, and saying, "Christine, I can help in some way." This is going to take a lot to get this across our nation, but I'm bound and determined it's going to happen. So I thank you so much for all of this, and I hope to have a picture with everybody with their bracelets on. Oh, the sheriff's going to speak.
Just real briefly, thank you, Mayor and City Councilwoman, Councilwoman, so much for this. I've had the privilege, I've been blessed to be with Christine for a long, long time. Unfortunately, we met after a tragedy, but it's this passion and this determination that you see here today that we all know how hard it is to get a bill introduced and then passed, and she was able to do that. And for law enforcement, it's real simple. Now we're able to access with one keystroke emergency contact information, and our goal is, we know that if, for no other reason, if we can get the family there to at least say goodbye. And that's what we focus on, to get the family there as soon as possible. So thank you so much for this. God bless y'all. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Sheriff, stay up there. Let me, let me do something real quick. Get a good picture, so. You know, Christine, you've done so much, and we've met numerous times, but from the City Council and me as mayor, we present you with a key to the city.
I give you a hug. That's bigger than my other keys.
Keep up the good fight.
I'm looking for everybody helping this good fight, and I thank you for tears because you're probably a mom, or, you know, so make sure all your families, yeah.
All right, at this time, we're going to ask Ernie Withers and Chief Gere and Candidate to come forward in the group, and Landis Group to give us some information. We know with the hurricanes, not Manatee hurricanes, but the Alene and Milton hurricanes, and kind of got things slowed up, but we were able to, we wanted to get the AEDs out as quick as possible, and all the firefighters, please come forward.
So thank you for the time, Mayor and Council. Tim Gere, Fire Chief, and we recently received a donation from Mr. Withers, and I'll turn it over to him right now, as he's not a stranger to us at all.
Well, I'd like to thank the City of Bradenton, bringing us here today, and we're so happy that the fire department were able to use the defibrillators. We donated 11 defibrillators. I was so lucky to have a second chance of life, and I wanted to ensure that our community has the same opportunity that I had, and I feel by facilitating CPR training and making sure that there's AEDs in our community, that'll help achieve that goal. With me today is Ruth Landis of Landis Emergency Training Services, where I went and got certified to learn how to do CPR and then certified to instruct and teach. And so we're so, we're so pleased to be able to give back in the community, so.
Ernie, tell us what an AED is, in case somebody watching on TV is-
So it's a defibrillator and what it, what it does, and Ruth, since she's my instructor and teacher.
So basically, in the event of a sudden cardiac arrest, that is an electrical problem, and the defibrillator actually fixes that electrical problem. So in essence, it stops the heart, and you start CPR on the, on the victim, and it kind of, once it does its job and you continue your compressions, then it kind of reminds the heart what it's supposed to do.
And it's, it's very user-friendly in businesses, the way, you know, we all, a lot of us older folks remember when we went through CPR in high school or different things, and things were harder. This really walks you through it, and, and you don't, you're not afraid of it, but you could save somebody's life. As we saw, if there wasn't, if Ernie was in the wrong spot at home laying in bed, he wouldn't have made it. But being in the right spot there, and, and again, it does, we have, and you've given a bunch to our police department, too, so there's been, been all that, but it gives actually opportunity to save somebody's life and be, be perfect, so, thank you. I was just trying to get out so people hear what it is and they understand and why they should make donations when Ernie gives a little bit of a pitch for getting more donated.
Well, he's, he's not done, obviously, with us. He's working on a huge donation for the City of Palmetto and the police department. I mean, hi, his numbers are growing by the week as far as who he's donated to, and, and I wanted to give a shout out to Inspector Terry Pearson, who couldn't be here today, but, you know, she came to us and was like, "Well, why can't we get with Mr. Withers and, and look at this, you know, as well?" And what a, what a great idea. And, you know, it's going to go in all our staff cars and, and give that, that opportunity to all of us, whoever need, needs to render aid until, you know, our full, full crew can get there with EMS. So we just can't thank Mr. Withers enough, and, you know, taking the time and, and working so hard to get us this huge donation, you know, financially, and it's just really incredible. And so we just wanted to make sure we could do all we could to help him and his cause and, and as he's helped us, return the favor. So thanks so much.
So Ernie, how-
And we wanted to make sure we got a photo with y'all and can still pass this along.
So tell us how people can help you if they can get more. So tell us how people can help you if they can get more, so you can get more.
So my foundation is set up through Manatee Community Foundation, and my uh, foundation's called Defibrillate Manatee. And currently, uh, year-to-date, since I, inception of the uh, foundation, we have donated 85 AEDs to our community. 30 training simulators, 30 CPR mannequins, and, and we helped facilitate and certify over 100 people in CPR certifications. So um, the campaign I'm working on now is 40 uh, AEDs for the city Palmetto Police Department, and their staff cars. Um, so I have a campaign out there trying to raise $50,000. If you go to Manatee Community Foundation, and just go to their websites, click Donate, and then it pop up, where you can choose where you want to donate it to, and Manatee Defibrillate is where my foundation is. So again, I want to thank the city of Bradenton to recognize, the story's not about me, the story is about you, individuals where you learn how to do CPR, and maybe you may be able to save a loved one and save somebody's life. And I hope to hear stories from the, the city of Bradenton Fire Department on the usage of one of our AEDs where it saved their lives, and, and that'll make a full circle. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, other than thank you very much? We appreciate it.
One, one thing he left out, and I, I really appreciate this aspect about him, is that he's given us the opportunity to go and uh, really work with, um, I think, believe you partnered with Derek Jeter?
With, with Martine Gramatica.
Martine Gramatica.
Life Guard Imaging, yes.
So we've already had um, one of our employees in Spousko and get a, a scan done. We're waiting to hear how that went, but it's no cost to first responders. And he was instrumental in getting that uh, available to us as well at no cost, and that's just amazing. And uh, because we, we try to make sure that we're heart healthy, you know, and avoid that. It's a huge risk for first responders, you know, with a shock to our heart and, and um, you know, whenever we get called out, so uh, that's, he's very humble in, in what he says, but he's also made that happen uh, for us, and we just can't thank him enough.
And also, not only when you get those scans, they may check other things and find things well in advance to save lives. So we want to make sure that, that, you know, if, if you got an opportunity, and what Martine Gramatica came in with the whole group yesterday and talked to Kiwanis, and really did a great job there, and I mean, we had, the last two weeks, I think there's been record numbers at Kiwanis in the audience, because it's two great uh, events that we've had, bragging on us a little bit, too, the week before, but um, this information is king, and that's what we're getting out now.
So to, to follow up on what Tim said there is, um, when I suffered my sudden cardiac arrest, Martine Gramatica and I happen to be good friends, we've done, we've been on several football trips with the Buccaneers together. He's a former NFL player, Super Bowl champion. And when he found out that I had a sudden cardiac arrest, he asked me if I'd come up and do a TV promotional spot with Gal Garrato on Bloom TV, talking about early detection. And while we were up there, my wife and I, uh, we went and visited their office and went through their consultation, and, and uh, we went and had, we decided to get the full body scans. And as we were there, um, immediately, they let me know right away that, man, my wife's heart does zero calcium score, which was perfect, and Martine was kind of rubbing that in, you know, in my face a little, and saying, we know who the, who the athlete is in the family. And um, two days later, he gave us a call, letting us know that she had a softball-sized tumor in her kidney that was stage two cancer. And so I've partnered with Life Guard Imaging in providing free heart scans for our community, for the organizations I talk to, and city council members, you, you guys are also welcome to visit Martine, his, his business, and get a consultation with you and your spouse, and get yourself a free heart scan and, and check out, and so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, oh, and come up here and we'll get a picture? Yeah.
We don't have one.
Some people...
We serve an office, we don't have one. One more for Dougie.
Ooh, that was a look.
That's Dougie's smile.
I just, one last follow-up thing. When I started my foundation, it was a week after I suffered my uh, my sudden cardiac arrest, I was invited to the mayor's box uh, to throw out the first pitch, the Pirates game. And in that, in that um, mayor's box, I was talking about how I'd wanted to give back to the community, and it was there that I, that I had the idea of, of starting a foundation, talking to Mayor Gene Brown. And I don't know if you know the story, Mayor Gene Brown, he had just gone to his uh, doctor, and he told me, he says, you know, Ernie, I kind of fibbed to my doctor, not telling him how I really was feeling, and he went back to his doctor, and he uh, found out that he had a 70% blockage in his heart and the widow maker, and he had to have a stent done. So that was one thing that, you know, felt good, that helped save his life. But Melanie Bevan, Chief Melanie Bevan was in the box, too, and she, and I was telling her, I'd like to raise money for defibrillators, and she raised her hand up fast, and she says, we could use 20 for the city of Bradenton, and that's how we started. So the first donation was 20 defibrillators to the city uh, police department. So thank you, Gene and Melanie, for helping me get that started.
It's uh, you know, we all, and I think more of us men, oh, it's just heartburn, oh, it's, you know, rub a little dirt on it, growing up, that's my dad's, rub a little dirt on it. But you try to, to hide things, but as you get older, you got to be a little more truthful to our spouses and, and our doctors, so that's important, that, you know, you hate a tragedy, but good things are coming out of it, and that's what, what you've done for us, Ernie. So thank you for giving back to that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thanks to everybody. Yep. All right, at this time, we'll move on to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on public hearings at the appropriate time. And as we've said all along, you know, we'll go through the citizen comment, and there is no extracurricular activities from the audience, or uh, you know, cheering or that, because this is a business meeting, and we move through it, you know, as appropriately as possible. So I just have one citizen comment, and it's Kurt Landefeld. Good morning, and you have three minutes.
Kurt Landefeld, 3993 Lakewood Avenue, Bradenton. Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to extend congratulations to you and to Councilwoman Coachman and Councilwoman Coker for your victories uh, last night. And I know that Councilwoman Coker scared off any opposition, so we, you know? But um, more importantly, I thought that last night represented a victory for civility and honesty in our public sphere. Mayor, particularly when your opponent went low, you stayed high. When you were attacked and distortions were put out there, you responded with accuracy and truth. When we had troubles with our sewage system and our water system because of the heavy rains and the hurricanes, your motto was to face it and fix it. And I can say personally, I watched during the response to the hurricanes, that your efforts were personally tireless. And you did so without seeking recognition, you wouldn't even put on a campaign shirt as you were out there picking up debris and branches and all. And uh, I would say personally, you wore me out. And Councilwoman Coachman, I'd like to offer this lesson from politics, that yard signs don't win elections, commitment to community does. And you were validated in that last night. Um, and finally, I'd like to just offer congratulations to the residents of our city. This was a win for the community. We pride ourselves in being called the friendly city. And last night was a validation that the politics of personal destruction do not work in this town. But that the politics of doing the right things for the right reasons does. Thank you.
All right, we have no other citizen comment? Any comment by the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Item six is the consent agenda. Staff is requesting approval of items A through AN, with the exception of item Q, which is polled.
Mayor, I move to adopt the um, consent agenda, items A through G, I through A.
To which ones, which one do you want? Just say which ones you want pulled.
Okay, I would like to pull H, AJ, and AK.
Okay, H, AJ, and AK. Okay, so um, and Q is already pulled by the staff. So you, you're approving all but H, AJ, and AK for approval?
Yes. That is correct.
H, AJ, and AK. So we have a motion to approve with the staff pulling Q off the agenda, and then Councilwoman Moore pulling H, AJ, and AK. The rest would be approved with this motion.
I'll second, but I'd like to approve or remove 6F, just for a point of clarification.
So F, so is that all right with your motion to pull F as well? Okay, all right. Okay, so consent agenda, approval minus FH, AJ, and AK, with Q being pulled by staff. We have a motion by Councilwoman Moore, and a second by Councilwoman Kramer. Any other discussion?
I just make one comment. I just want the public to understand that we did go through, there was a lot on here. And I met with Mr. Perry, and uh, just want to make sure that everybody knows that, that there's a lot of thought that went into it, just because it's on the consent agenda, we did go into a lot of details.
And that, Mr. Perry always makes his standard statement that went through it, but one of the things that the reason there is so much is because of Hurricane Helene and Milton, we didn't have an October meeting, so this is really double meeting with staff. Mr. Perry?
Just to protect the record for purposes of preface, that I had, did have the opportunity to meet with each and every counselor, and go over all of the agenda consent items, as well as the entirety of the agenda, and uh, there were some questions that were asked and researched a little bit further, and, and I appreciate everybody's attention and time in doing that. Um, I think I spent probably, on average, about an hour per counselor.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
All right, why don't we start, if it's all right with you, Ms. Moore, with Mr. Kramer, since he only has one? F?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kramer?
I know we talked ad nauseam, I think, in our last meeting about this, so I don't want to take up a lot of time. Um, I spoke with Mr. Perry and briefed with Mr. Williams, I just want to make sure we quantify how the payment is going to be, at least just tell us in the meeting, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to go into the resolution or the policy necessarily, but exactly how that payment's going to get from the...
When we talk about the payment, you're referring to the subsidy. And that is a sliding scale stipend, right, that, that is, is related to retired employees. And it will go directly back as a HCA type payment into a dedicated bank account. There were some issues about uh, looking at the possibility of putting it into a healthcare savings account, but I think this provides the recipient more flexibility. If they want to use that money for, for purposes other than their healthcare costs, they can. There would be tax benefit, you had asked me about that, if it did go into a healthcare savings account, but it would also restrict the use of that money. Um, it does roll over and build up every year. Uh, so we're looking at that, we're looking at other options, if it go into 457, not this year, but, but probably in the future, but ultimately, it's important to understand for the public that might be watching this, is that our retirees receive a stipend based on their years of service for their continuing payment of healthcare insurance. And I think the maximum is $400 a year, as a, as, uh, a month, I'm sorry, total of $3,600 uh, for the year. And to that extent, basically, that will be paid directly to that recipient. And they can use it to pay their portion of their health insurance premium or other things. Uh, they might be on Medicare, and to that extent, they could buy a supplemental plan. And there might be additional funds that are freed up as free cash to them. So we did work that out, we appreciate um, your attention to that, those details, as well as the, the error that was in the drafting of the prior policy, which really prohibited people that were retired prior to, a date in 2024, I want to say it was March perhaps, um, from getting on the program, um, getting off the program and then coming back. This allows them to come back. One time.
One time.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve item 6F, I think it was F.
All right, is there a second? All right, Ms. Barnaby, Vice Mayor Barnaby. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Okay, approved five to zero. Mrs. Moore, you want to start with um, H?
Yes, that is an easy one. I, I wanted Ms. Melton to know that I read the minutes, and so I, my name is misspelled on page eight.
Okay, thank you.
So that is just a very tidy thing.
I apologize.
No, no worries. If I left it, then she might not think I read it.
All right, so you want to make a motion to approve the scribbler errors there?
Yes, please, yes.
All right.
I move to approve uh, the minutes from August 14, 2024, as corrected.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Coachman. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Ms. Moore?
Uh, regarding both, uh, AJ and AK, um, I'll just lump them together for purposes of uh, discussion. I have had nothing but good experience with the Southern group, um, and I think that the, as far as the price and our rate of return, it makes total sense, and I support the endeavor for us to um, hi, engage lobbyists on our behalf and on the city's behalf. My only comment was going to be that um, in the past couple of years with my service on the uh, couple of councils that I've been appointed to, a lot of other municipalities have dedicated conversations to legislative priorities, and then actually, to some extent, formalize them a little more. I know our staff is very diligently working with them and meets with them regularly, um, and I enjoy my conversations with our, our state lobbyists, but I feel like it would be beneficial to us, for us to get together every now and then, and have a little bit more of a formalized conversation about what we want them to do for us on our behalf. So that, I just throw that out there as a suggestion, that we consider adopting some kind of routine of having that kind of, that conversation.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah, this, I've dealt with city councils, or, or organizations, municipal leagues, League of Cities, things like that, uh, and what ends up happening is, you know, we, we focus our legislative efforts on appropriations, on support for infrastructure. By and large, when you look at funding that we receive from both the Fed, federal government, and the state, we focused on this, and we really only embarked upon this for the last three years, with, with gleaming success, in my opinion. We haven't gotten into the policy realm. When you get into the policy realm of whether you're going to support abortion initiatives, firearm initiatives, and a host of other controversial initiatives, as an adoption of a local government, it becomes somewhat dicey, uh, both on a dais for a city council, or for an organization such as the League of Cities and the like, because they're engaging in public policy advocacy. If you'd like to do that, that is entirely a prerogative. If you'd like to do that, that is entirely a prerogative. And it's something that is beyond my pay grade and probably most of my staffs. We'll get you the data you need. But if, to take the time to do that, I think you have to look at how much time it's going to take, because you're going to be putting an awful lot of effort in, an awful lot. And you're probably going to come up with a lot of split opinions on those procedures. So I would leave it up to council and we'll take the direction from you on how deep a dive you want to do on those policy initiatives.
Councilwoman Coker?
Yeah, I, I can appreciate wanting to have input onto what the agenda is, but I, I don't think we should each be giving them direction. I think that it's better having one person to speak. So I don't know if we have a workshop where we discuss what we want to, but I don't think it would be, it would work in our favor to have us each having our own agenda, yeah.
Let me finish, if anybody else, does anybody else have any comments before? All right, Ms. Moore?
And to clarify, I don't mean that we each like make time to, to deal with the lobbyists necessarily. I mean amongst us. And also to be clear, I'm not trying to touch any of that. I'm talking city-specific initiatives. I think, you know, our, our suffering with the hurricanes is a pure, is a great example of perhaps some policy things that we might be interested in pursuing and discussing more. I mean, we have a great relationship with our delegation, I'm not trying to jeopardize that. But I think that it's relevant. I, and I'm just saying, having a conversation. We don't have to formally, you know, we don't have to reduce this to anything super formal. A workshop is a great idea.
Ms. Coachman?
I'm trying to understand, so it sounds like you're saying periodically we meet with them to, no?
No, I meant we meet.
That's what I said, we, I meant we.
Oh, right.
I think I get what you're saying and I agree with you.
To be updated on where we're going.
Right, you're right.
And we get the updates, individual things, you can, obviously, Mr. Perry's door is always open to talk about it. And, you know, most of our stuff so far has been more about infrastructure and reaction. And I do think that we need to be a little bit more proactive on some of that, which that's kind of in our face it and fix it situation. And, you know, obviously, we have to be one as a group, but we also have to figure out what is, you know, I would never want to go and say, oh, well, I'm going for this because it came in my lap and then realize it's not something we want to do. Now, you know, with the money that we've spent on the lobbyists the last three years, and we've said this many times, the return of, if all of us invested 225,000 and came out with north of 20 million, we'd be happy. But now what can we do to make sure that the next 10 years isn't reacting, it's being proactive on it? So I don't disagree with you on that. I think there's been some things, obviously, that we might, we probably would have had some more workshops in the last several months we've talked about, but the last several months have been reacting to three major things that in, it's been everything, so. But anyway, no, I agree with you, there's, I think there's some opportunity. We can have some discussion about opportunities more than political innuendos, so.
And Mayor, if I could just, I think I understand a little bit more, I appreciate the clarification and you and I have had those kinds of discussions. I just want to point out that, you know, a lot of where we go is where we think the fishing holes are best, where the money is available. And a lot of that is based on recommendations from our lobbyists as far as availability of funding. As, sometimes it actually explores the coalitions of what other people are doing. And so we could maybe get into that, whether it's infrastructure, sewer lining, resiliency funds, things like that. So we try to focus on those areas. When we've gotten outside of that box, we have seen vetoes and other pushback at the legislative delegation level itself. And we've also received recommendations to pool things together opposed to separate them, which sometimes you might, it'd be benefit to separate it to say, well, if we don't get that one, it's okay, we have these other priorities. That's actually the first session we did. I remember getting calls from Senator Boyd and some of the representatives saying, well, what are your priorities? And they're asking me and I was like, well, I can tell you, I guess, like what the city's administrative priorities are, but I can't really speak sunshine and other restrictions, you know, and, and they need it that, on a Saturday evening before they go to sprinkle and, you know, conference committee and do things like that. It comes a little tricky. As far as the overall, I think what comments from Councilwoman, I don't disagree that, I'd like to see a little bit of direction. I think I usually provide counsel of decent information, because it usually starts with the submission of these House forms, H R, H 48s, I think, which is the request that starts in the House. That's the way it's been done. And I usually brief people about, well, these are the requests we put in. They usually come out of Public Works. P D does a good job getting theirs, Fire does, you know, whatever they can do and the like. But it's, it's done probably as streamlined and efficiently as I think we can do it for the first couple of years.
I think we've learned from it too.
Sure.
You know, with never having it before. And I think one of the things that, that we saw, we had two vetoes this past year, which may have been good or bad, you know, from a standpoint. One of them, you know, affected us in our sewer lining, you know, possibilities. And then one of them affected in some traffic study possibility. And when you, when you look at that, you could say, okay, the one I don't understand, the other one I can maybe see because, you know, trying, you got to cut a billion dollars, you got to find it from somewhere. But, you know, then the one with the sewer lining, you know, it was a good conversation when I had with the governor. I did mention that to him, that, you know, you kind of banged us a little bit, but then you also vetoed us, stuff we were trying to fix. So I, we just want to understand some of it. It's not about saying that I agree or disagree with the vetoes, but we'd like a little more information. And, you know, most times, sometimes you disagree with us, but you may agree with the whole thing when you look at the whole, so. No, I agree with it on the part of conversations and going through things. But like I said, we're, I don't ever feel like we should get in the weeds of some of those other things. And I don't think that's not what you're talking about, so.
Thank you.
All right, so any other questions or concerns?
Can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know that, because I've gotten this from other people feedback. I know when we say lobbyist, sometimes that's pejorative and people have a negative connotation with it. And I think that people need to understand that we're using them as a consultant, a legislative consultant. They're not fundraising and writing checks, that kind of lobbyists. This is about advocacy and information, like you said, knowing who to talk to, knowing when things are happening. And they're on the ground, they're the boots on the ground. So if you have a negative connotation for lobbyists, understand that they really are serving a purpose in helping to make, make it happen.
You just look at 225,000 spent, 20 million plus return. That's a no-brainer. And if that's.
In public safety, technology, in hurricane preparation and recovery and, and, and reaction in infrastructure. I mean, those are the things that mostly people are not going to object to. They're widely beneficial.
Right.
Yep.
All right, anything else?
I mean, I'll just piggyback on what Mr. Perry said. I do enjoy, we have very productive conversations. I guess overall, I'm just saying, and I think it would benefit the public. I enjoy when we, as a body, have an opportunity to have conversations and unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, this is the only place that we can do it, so.
All right, thank you. So a motion?
I move to adopt, or I'm sorry, I move to approve consent agenda items A J and A K.
All right.
Second.
Second by Ms. Coker. And any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
Four, one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
I was going to go backwards. Maybe a little tired. All right, Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address city council during, during the following public hearings will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Do we want to combine?
I see you have your regular clothes on today.
I'm not sweaty.
Big Bird outfit.
Oh, okay.
I know, I was wondering too.
He's usually attired in these meetings.
At a Halloween party and.
Award-winning.
Award-winning Halloween outfit.
I'm starting to question what my staff thinks of me when I get Porky Pig and Big Bird. I don't want Paul, but the fat one, I was a little worried.
I've seen you shopping. There you go.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we're going to combine items seven A, B and C into one public hearing.
Okay. Is that okay with the applicant? Thank you.
So basically, what we have in front of you today are three cases. These are for sidewalk cafes. Our codes allow for sidewalk cafes in our downtown district, but there is an exception in there that if they serve alcohol on this sidewalk cafes, that they need to get special use approval by city council and a recommendation through planning commission. Our first three cases we have coming through are O'Briks, Thavs and Jennings provisions. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carter. He's going to run through the project a little bit and then I'll come back up and do a staff presentation and then we'll just go from there.
Can you just give a quick synopsis why this is coming up now?
Well, there's a little bit of everything going on with the downtown area. So partly with this is to re-up them. We do have a lot of businesses downtown that do like to establish sidewalk cafes to serve their clients and their patrons. With this, this also reminds them that they need to get an extension of premise for their liquor license. Now, there is other things that go on in the downtown area, including special events. This, we want to make sure they have this stuff established for the special events, but they also need to coordinate with the special events organizer, which is totally separate than this. So that is one of the things. And this will also kind of tie into the after 12 ordinance that was recently passed by city council. So that's kind of what we're, just catching everyone up to speed. We lasted this about 10 years ago. We've had businesses move, we've had different management. We want to make sure everyone is capacious and that they have everything in order, because the last thing we need is for them to come through or the state come through, see that they're serving outside, people don't have the right permits and they're shut down. When we're trying to make an active and vibrant and safe downtown area for everyone.
And I think when Oak and Stone came through, it kind of opened up the eyes to formalize our policy with everybody, not to change anything, but just to give everybody the opportunity to clean everything up with all of the changes that have happened. And, and we are doing this to help downtown and there is no permitting fees.
Correct.
At this time, just to clean it up, just to make sure everybody's uniform and everybody with our police department, our code enforcement will be able to have the same rules.
Yes. And one other thing, we also had Oak and Stone, we also had Good Liquid. So this was, these are three, four and five coming in. We've had, Corks has reached out to us and Lost Kangaroo, so we're working with them right now to get them started in the process also. So everyone is abiding by it, which we really appreciate their assistance. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike real quick and he can talk about his project.
That's great, you're welcome. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mike Carter, 435 12th Street West. We have worked with staff to try to provide the best and most thorough application possible. We've asked our architect to draft both an overall site plan of our properties from 417 down to 435. We were careful to include all of the information required by the ordinance, demonstrating ownership, quantity of tables, chairs, locations of various devices that are on the sidewalk, so that perhaps our application can become a model for the city in the, in the future. Of importance in our overall site plan is demonstration of the five-foot clear pedestrian walkway. It is demonstrated graphically. We also have access to each of the businesses demonstrated as well as access to be maintained to our fire department connection point on the face of the building. Two items that are included in the applications are a request for you to consider an exception. The code does state that all exterior furniture on the sidewalk is to be removed each night and put inside the building. We're requesting that we be allowed to keep four tables and the associated chairs overnight on the sidewalk. That location is delineated on our site plan. We corral them together and cable them off so that they are unusable. They are very heavy, they have umbrellas with very heavy bases on them. The other deviation is the code says a maximum of 20 seats per applicant. O'Briks is requesting 50. I think it's important to understand that O'Briks occupies three separate storefronts. So theoretically, they could get 60 seats if you were to look at it on a storefront by storefront basis. It does all fit on the sidewalk, it operates well, and I think all of you have experienced that, I hope. Upon your approval here today, we will then go to alcohol and tobacco to coordinate these plans with those licenses as well as the health department. They've all been informed and this is the proper sequence of events. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So I think one of the things that, when we've had previous discussions and why, when we brought everybody in and we talked amongst ourselves, that it was important to make sure that, that we did have the five feet and it was important to try to work with the businesses to, like you said, with your tables on the one part, but they're not affecting anything on the five feet. And people to realize that if we have a uniform throughout the whole city, then it's not one person getting a special privilege over another. Everybody has the same opportunity to succeed. And even with your chairs, you know, your seats, it's not just one application, it's actually for several areas. So I thought that was important to make sure that, to say that. So if somebody else comes in and says, well, you're letting so-and-so do this and you're not allowing me to do it. No, the application is in and it's explained why. And it's important to, to have opportunity. So if there is a problem, it can be solved easily, not, you know, favoritism, so.
And another important point, the sidewalk cafe permit is in the building property owner's name. So if there's ever an enforcement issue or need, it comes back to me. Our staff maintain the entire sidewalk, our staff make sure that we maintain those pedestrian ways and all of the things associated with that cafe permit. Each individual business is then obligated to conform with the alcohol sales provisions and those appropriate laws as well. This also establishes the area by which we can participate in the trespass ordinance. So that if we have someone standing in a planter, by virtue of this diagram, we can then call for trespass on a particular person that might be violating those ordinances as well.
Any questions?
This, this is not really changing your, what's there now, correct? This is pretty much just codifying that?
It's very, it does two things. It does not represent, it represents more spaces for seats than are currently being utilized today. So it gives us the maximum that would be allowable. So you'll see a couple of tables in front of our office. But the ordinance does allow for bricks, as an example, to utilize the sidewalk in front of an adjoining property owner, provided that property owner gives its, its permission. I give my permission. So if they ever chose that they wanted to put a couple of waiting seats there, as an example, they would be allowed to by this diagram, but they're not utilizing it today.
Ms. Moore?
It's not a question for the applicant, it's just something that is occurring to me that is actually more geared towards attorney Brutusso. And I didn't think of it until just now. So I feel like I'm out of order, so I apologize for that. I believe I have a family member that is currently employed by the applicant. And so I don't know if that is a problem or not.
Yes, you should, you should refrain from voting on these three items.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Carter. As I'm opening up the PowerPoint, I also want to reiterate congratulations to Mayor, Councilwoman Coker and Councilwoman Coachman on your victories last night. We look forward to continue our working relationship with you guys and with all of you. The other one's sitting at home breathing a sigh of relief last night. Here's a quick presentation. This is just some information about the case as Mr. Carter talked about. It is for three properties at 417 through 435, 12th Street West. This is in our downtown area, which is T4 zoning with an urban core feature land use. And again, this is for three restaurants with alcohol sales. Here's just a location map showing where those properties are. This is the zoning map, as you can see, the T5 zoning and the urban core future land use. This is the definition of a sidewalk cafe. It's an area where food or beverage is served from an adjacent cafe or restaurant, which is exactly what is going on with the. is exactly what is going on with these three uses right now. So that is the definition in our Form Based Code. The proposed request as mentioned is for 417, 419, and 421 through 435. I have it broke out by the business names there. As you can see down low in the chart, these are permitted, but when you get into the issue of the alcohol sales, it does kick it over to a special use in our land use regulations. So it kind of flips flops between the Form Based Code and the land use regulations on this.
Mr. Delong, real quick, I thought of something while you were on that.
Yeah.
So, and this has happened, you mentioned about people moving, different businesses going in. Say a business changes. Do they have to redo this, or can they go by the same, because you do have names on it?
Right. This is, this is just the presentation has the names on it. The ordinance, the resolutions that were passing today do not have names.
So that goes with the address?
Goes with the address. Now, if they want to change what was approved today, then they'd have to come back and redo it.
But if somebody goes into, just say, FAVs, for example, and still a pizza place, but it's called ABC Pizza, they can still do it?
Exactly. As long as they maintain what is approved today, because we are gonna be laminating these site plans and having them in the restaurants for these restaurant owners to have, so the police know the boundaries should they have issues, items like that.
I just thought it was important to memorialize it for the future, so it's not another situation you have to go through.
Not a problem. The resolutions do not have names associated to them.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Here's just a quick site plan, showing all three of them. It's a little difficult to see. I have where 12th Street is on the north side, which you can see kind of going down the street where everything is kind of laid out. With the Jennings downtown provisions, this is what their proposal is. They're asking for four tables with fourteen chairs. They will have no busing or hostess stations there, so, and they are removing their seating and tables at night from the sidewalk when the business is closed. And here are some photos that I took, seems like ages ago, a couple storms ago, actually. Here's FAVs. They're requesting two tables with eight seats. They are also proposing no busing or hosting stations, and they will also remove their tables and chairs every evening as they close. And below on that diagram, you can see the layout. And here's just a photo I took one morning walking through there. And then we get to O'Briks. And O'Briks is requesting fourteen tables, and as Mr. Carter mentioned, a total of fifty chairs. They will have a busing and hosting station also outside. They are requesting that four of the tables with umbrellas and sixteen chairs remain on the sidewalk when the business is closed. And as he mentioned earlier, they will be tied together by cable. It is heavy furniture, so that is why they're making this request. And they also have on their site plan the location where the furniture will be stored. So that helps us out also. With the request for the fifty chairs and four tables, as mentioned earlier, that does request a stipulation be added to the approval, and planning commission did recommend that as one of the stipulations. And here's a site plan, and as you can see, the chairs kind of, chairs and tables kind of meander down the sidewalk. And kind of right here, it's a little difficult to see, but there's this oval area here, that is where they will be corralling and storing the furniture at night. And here is just some photos I took. I kind of put on the right-hand photo where the furniture storage would be at on the sidewalk. Summary of the proposed requests, and Mr. Carter did a great job mentioning this, they are keeping five feet a traversable space, and that is actually measured from the perimeter of the umbrellas, you know, when Big Bird walks down the street, I guess, so we don't hit our heads. They're also requiring the three feet of clearance for all FDC or the fire department connections. This does, here's just the policy out of the comprehensive plan on public streets. It does encourage this type of use of our public sidewalks downtown with sidewalk cafes and things like that, so it does meet that. And they are also meeting, per the policy 1.2.5 of the comprehensive plan, the minimum clearance of five feet. Now, here's the land use regulations, a lot of verbiage here. It's copy and paste it out of the code. It was also in the staff reports that you have in front of you, but it just kind of summarizes the sidewalk cafe and the process for removing things when the businesses are closed, ingress and egress being maintained, items like that that are in the land use regulations under 4.3.11.1. And it also gets into some of the details about maintenance and keeping the sidewalks clean. One of the stipulations we always like to add is that if they are using some type of cleaning solution, that it can be approved by our public works department, so we aren't putting things down our storm drains that we don't want to see go down there. They also have to do assurance with the city with an indemnity agreement, and then that is where we're gonna place that trespassing clause that Mr. Carter mentioned, so we can have that in there, so if they do have issues, the police can act upon any trespassing in the area. And that is pretty much a summary of that. And then here's just the general standards of the land use regulations under 3.3.1 that need to be taken into consideration as cases come through planning commission and city council. And I'm not gonna read through all these, it's just a lot of verbiage. And here's some more criteria that need to be considered. In reviewing all of these, the applicant did appear to meet all of them and everything. So this is A through K. As I mentioned, K kind of talks about the comprehensive plan. I pointed that out earlier in this report. So staff comments. You know, we do encourage that city council evaluate the request based on the provider criteria, as well as input from staff, the applicant, and the public. It is in staff's opinion that the requests are found to be consistent with the intent of Section 3.3.2.5 of the land use regulations, and also the design element of the comprehensive plan, and that is for all three cases, which are 24-76, 24-77, and 24-78. So planning commission summary. Planning commission met back on September 18th, and they did recommend approval with a vote of five zero for, this is for case 24-76, and this is the Jennings provisions one, and they did request that these stipulations be added, and they are A through F. And it's basically include a site plan on site, you know, execute the indemnification agreement within thirty days, maintain the clear pedestrian traversable space, that they obtain all licensing that they need, any cleaning solution, as I mentioned earlier, be approved by public works, and in the future, if this does need to be modified, that it comes back to city council. So that is the first case, which is Jennings provisions case, which is 24-77, or 24-76. FAVs, which is 24-77, it is, they recommended, planning commission also in September 18th, recommended approval with a vote of five zero with the following stipulations. They are identical to the stipulations that we just saw for Jennings. And then for Resolution 24-78, they also recommended approval. This time, it was a vote of four to one, and this is for O'Briks. The stipulations are the same as Jennings and FAVs, with the exception that there is the request of the additional seating and the addition of maintaining or leaving furniture out on the public sidewalk after the business hours are closed. So that is the only additional stipulations that they added to the O'Briks request or Resolution 24-78. And that is a quick summary of all three cases, if you have any questions.
Questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Coachman, sure.
I want to, the furniture that's gonna be left, corralled and secured, exactly where the location is?
It's kind of hard to see on the site plan.
It's not changing from where it is.
Not changing where they put it now.
I just need to, I just want to.
Yeah, so here's a, here's a street view. It's this area right here where this cluster.
Those are spread out.
They're spread out a little bit, but on.
I thought it was that little bump out area.
Yeah, on this site plan here, there's this little oval area right here.
I gotcha.
Where the bump out is in the street, and that is where they're gonna be storing it.
Okay.
So it's not affecting the sidewalk, walking and all.
I knew, I just needed to see it, because I've not been downtown when there been.
Clustered before.
Yeah. I'm home in bed.
So any questions, further questions before we go to public hearing? All right. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do this with all of the stips. If I get it wrong, I know Councilman Kramer will tell me I've read the number wrong.
You just want me to go ahead and do it?
Yeah.
All right.
Go right ahead.
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-76 with stipulations noted.
And 20, we can vote all three of them at once?
No. I would do them individually.
Okay, so we're gonna have a motion by Councilman Kramer to approve 24-76 with stipulations?
A through F.
A through F.
All stipulations, okay. Is there a second? All right, Ms. Barnaby. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carrie's four to zero with counsel. Well, you don't have to abstain on that one, though, is it the whole thing?
Without knowing in advance the exact relationship, I would just recommend that she go ahead and abstain on all three.
Okay, so with Councilwoman Moore abstaining because of a family relationship. Guess that's what it is, so. All right, Carrie's four to zero. Councilman Kramer?
Move to approve Resolution 24-77 with all stipulations noted.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barnaby. All right. So 24-77 with all stipulations. I'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Carrie's four to zero with the same abstaining by Councilwoman Moore. All right, Councilman Kramer?
Move to approve Resolution 24-78 with all stipulations noted.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barnaby again. Okay. With all stipulations.
Clarification, with all the stipulations attached to that resolution? Because there's, there's a few different from that one than.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All the additional and same. All right, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carrie's four to zero. All right, thank you. Mr. Carter, and I appreciate, and I'd just say it, I think from the whole council and all the, all previous councils, and what you've done for downtown has always been such a great thing in making it look good and doing the right thing, so we appreciate that. Yes, sir, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item 7D is final order in Resolution 2497.
Okay. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And congratulations on all your reelections. And, let me go ahead and pull this up. My name is Monica Friedel, and I am with the City Planning Department. I have, oh, I'll wait for you to.
We don't need to read.
Perfect. So I do have the applicant reps, Crystal and Victor with the National Guard, that I'll go ahead and bring up here. This is essentially for a eight-foot fence. It's going to include barbed wire. It's for the National Guard, and it's at the cross streets of 21st Street East and 13th Avenue. Do you want me to pull up the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Apologies, I wasn't quite expecting this.
Welcome, you want to come closer to the microphone, if you don't mind? Just state your name for the record.
My name is Crystal Shealy. I work for the Department of Military Affairs. We have received very specific funding to harden our facilities, to put in the required federal fencing around the front, and we have contracted with CPPI, and this is representative, their representative, Brian. I do have representative from our Force Protection Agency or Directorate, because this is part of the funding that we received it for. We would like to put this fence up. It's a seven-foot, seven-foot vinyl coated fencing with a one-foot extension barbed wire arm off the top of it. And it'll go around the front. This will protect the front of the property. We already have it in the back of the property, which protects our military vehicles, and this will protect our front from personnel perhaps driving up to the front of our facilities. And it protects the front, so last year, we did harden the front of our buildings with ballistic level five storefronts. So this is additional protection for our assets and personnel on site.
So what is there right now?
So this facility actually has two missions. It has a federal mission, and they support our national capital region in DC, and as well as foreign missions as well. And they also assist in local hurricane relief.
I mean, where you've got the orange on the picture there, what is actually sitting there right now?
Nothing. Currently, it is vacant, but when our units deploy or get activated for state duty for hurricanes, they park on property, and it protects their property while that armory and property is vacated.
I mean, there isn't any concrete barriers there right now?
There are, so.
That's what I was asking, so right now.
Yes, I see what you're saying, yes.
Yeah, what is there right now doing that?
So that is actually for crash rating. So the fence, we didn't get enough funding to make it a crash K8 fence, so the barriers will stay there. Right now, we're trying to just put the fencing up, just to get them within our guidelines.
All right, any questions of the applicant? All right.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Barbed wire, I mean, is there, is there a problem? I mean, I guess I don't understand, do you have a problem with people getting in, or?
It's a federal requirement.
It is, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I agree, when I first saw barbed wire, but then when I realized what it was, I was like, oh, yeah, we gotta protect, you know, we gotta protect it, you know, that's our defense.
I had the opportunity to go onto the location multiple times during the storm and the aftermath of the storm, and I actually drove to the back of the location, because there was a, there was a hygiene center back there, temporary hygiene center, the showers and the like. And when I looked at it, I hadn't been there before, and I saw a lot of equipment that needed protecting, to be honest with you, and it was fairly open access, as depicted in these photographs. Those are not permanent, those are temporary jersey barriers, which is to be referred to. So I could understand why the guard would have to have a strong interest in this federal requirement to harden the perimeter of their facility, the security perimeter. It isn't in a particular area, because it's adjacent to the backside, as our member of kind of the Dream Center property. I think we have an entrance in there that's a gated, it looked like it was a large fence, maybe a six-foot fence, probably about 12 feet wide, double swing. And a lot of the folks that were delivering to the Dream Center, the hygiene center and some of the water, actually, when you pull it up, and that's where it would take them on the maps. And so this area isn't particularly sense, highly sensitive to residential architectural standards, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I also appreciate the guard's efforts and work during the hurricane. They did fabulous work in the colony and in the city.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
But that perimeter, though, on 13 Ave is residential, so theoretically, the people that are south of, on 13 Ave are gonna be facing.
Well, this is on 21st Ave, isn't it?
Is that the only place? I'm looking at the perimeter of the subject parcel, is it for just the, a portion of it, or is it for the?
It says 13th.
We would be fencing in the entire property.
With the barbed wire?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so that, I mean.
It is the whole property.
I just, I wonder the need for barbed wire. An eight-foot fence is, I mean, rational, and I get hiding from the public the assets, but it feels.
It's a federal requirement.
Yeah, it's standard security. From a guy that ran prisons for six or seven years, those types of outriggers are designed to be anti-climb, anti-penetration, and things like that. You probably definitely want, you know, a security barrier along the top of that perimeter fencing. Typically, what you would have is basically double fencing, when you look at prisons, and they're much higher, they're either curved in, or they're outrigger with stringers, and usually Constantina wire along the top with electronic sensors, both motion as well as ground sensitivities. This is fairly minimal, as security goes, in my opinion.
I, and I understand, barbed wire, it sounds, oh my gosh, why would you want that in your residential area? But it's what you're protecting and what you're trying to deter, I feel. Because some, someone might want access, and it might not be the right person. And it could very well not be anyone who's living in the neighborhood that, that is going to dare do that, but it's, I get what you're saying, because there are residences nearby, and it seems kind of hardened. But, but for what it's protecting, can't just have a little latch on the door. I don't know.
I'm sure there's an armory inside.
Yeah, it is, there's an armory there.
Military-grade type weaponry beyond light weapons, put it that way. I don't need to get into laws, rockets and all that stuff, or AMRAP vehicles, but when I drove around the outside, the stuff I saw, and I was surprised I was able to get in as far as I was without security, but it was a busy place that day. It was on a Saturday. It was on a Saturday, I think it was the same day I saw Councilwoman Coachman down to Dream Center. But, but I was surprised I was able to get to the back and that there was access and I think you really need to protect those things from getting into the wrong hands, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was reminded, driving in the area, that it was there because you, and I was like, that's an armory? You know, it was just so open and so easy accessible. Unfortunately, we have to go.
Alright, so I think we probably need to move on from.
Yeah, sorry.
Security parts of things for safety. Alright, thank you. Staff have any other comments before we go to public hearing?
I do have a whole presentation that I could, uh, just provide additional information on, essentially why we, we brought this forward. Uh, this is in our form-based code, so, um, per our form-based code, this did require a special city council review because of the barbed wire. Um, you'll also see in the response criteria that this is fa, uh, federal directive. And, um, per the application materials, the proposed fence meets those, uh, minimum, uh, regulation requirements for the Department of Military. And this is essentially just showing you the zoning, the location. Um, I did get out on site as well and I did take some photos. Uh, but essentially what the request is, is for that barbed wire, but in addition, um, our form-based code only allows up to four feet around all property lines once you pass that building facade. Um, in addition, um, if you guys notice, if I can actually just pull up the site plan, it is within thirty-five feet of intersecting streets, so that is something that, um, you guys may want to consider in terms of the site visibility triangle. I did include the definition of that. I don't know, and I, a boundary survey would be helpful in determining essentially where that line ends, just in terms of when people turn, you know, you want it to be safe. Um, in the application materials, it did also note black coated vinyl, I don't know, okay. Um, that there is an existing barbed wire fence there now and it, I don't believe it's black. Okay, so I don't know if that's something you guys want to consider, um, when approving or, um, making your decision. These are some photos that I did take, this, you'll see the picture on the right shows where I was when I took the photo. I'm facing the southwest corner and you do see that existing barbed wire fence there now. This is the southwest corner facing north, just so you, uh, get a vantage point of that. This is facing east on that southwest corner. And then I'm on the residential side facing north. So essentially in addition, let me go back to that site plan. They're also proposing, uh, those two gates where the blue lines are. And then I also, uh, just, I provided some dimensions just for you guys to kind of get, um, reference as to the location and the distances, including that site visibility. But yes, essentially, um, when you refer back to the land use regulations for the barbed wire, um, it does require city council, special city council approval and/or review. And then the, uh, should you guys approve the requested, um, the request for the fence, the following stipulations are recommended. However, I did note the black vinyl chain, chain fence would not be matching the current barbed wire fence on site, so just something to, uh, consider. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes.
If, if it's a federal requirement, would, why doesn't that preempt the requirement for city council approval?
So, uh, our agency, we're a state agency, so we want all of our projects, um, whether it's federally funded or funded, we have a microphone.
Oh, I, I apologize. Um, as a state agency, we want all of our projects to be permitted through the local authority, so it gets that oversight and inspection by your, I mean, municipality. So that's just, um, I think good business for our agency to do.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions before we go to public hearing? Seeing none, thank you, you can sit down, fine, appreciate it. We'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve, I don't have it in front of me, the resolution.
Alright.
Second, twenty-four ninety-seven.
Twenty-four ninety-seven.
Seven, okay. Alright, we have a motion by Counselor Kramer, a second by, second Vice Mayor Coachman. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Um, the fact that some of the fencing there would not be matching and, you know, I am concerned about it being a residential area and what they're looking at. I mean, is it too cumbersome to request that it all be matching, or I don't know how much is there and what the cost would be?
I guess that would be a question for the applicant, is it?
Yep.
Yep, they can, they can make it match.
Okay.
They, they mentioned in the audience that they can make it all match.
Well, I'd like to.
Should that be added to the?
Can we be amend that to the stip, stipulation?
Match black or match?
Match black.
Let's, let's have them come back up on the microphone so we can clarify.
What's existing now is not black, so, um, essentially if you want it to match it, I'm assuming it would need to be.
The, the whole property would be covered by the new existing.
The black vinyl.
The black vinyl, so, if we can ask the applicant to come up.
And verify the funds.
Just to verify in the discussion.
I don't know how much is existing, so I don't know if this is a big ass.
Prohibited, or?
Yeah.
So we basically want it to look uniform throughout the whole property. Is that something that can be done?
We can make the fencing in the front match the fencing in the back, and that's just galvanized fencing.
Oh, no.
We don't have the, we don't have the funds.
To do it all black.
The entire property.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Perry?
Just briefly, the vast majority of the property looks to have just regular galvanized gray, uh, fencing around it. When I was there, my memory and, and, and also being refreshed with the photographs, I think that they want to put the black vinyl fencing, which is probably aesthetically more pleasing. It's rubberized, it's newer, it doesn't rust, it doesn't look as bad sometimes as the other stuff. And so if you want them to match, they're gonna match the old stuff.
No, I don't.
Would there ever be a plan, because I think we're going to eight foot, that's only six foot there. Am I mistaken?
If it's ever replaced, that it would be.
Is that something that?
When it gets replaced, yes, sorry, it will be replaced with black vinyl.
To match.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other way to mitigate the way this is gonna look? I, I just, I'm struggling with putting this in the middle, literally dropping it in the middle of a residential area. I mean, barbed wire, I, I feel like it's detrimental to the, to the area. I can't imagine that the armory and, and other assets are not currently secured in some fashion and that this stands between the safety of the assets and not being safe.
I, just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I'm, I'm ready to go get a shovel and dig a moat around this place for them too. I don't understand why we're debating barbed wire around a military facility that the military is, quite frankly, asking us for. I don't think they really need to ask, I think they could've just done it anyway. Um, I know it's in the neighborhood, but I also know the people in that neighborhood know it's in the neighborhood and I don't.
They're not the ones that we gotta worry about trying to get in there.
Right, so I, to make any facility there more hardened and less of a risk for the people in that neighborhood to have some type of problem happen at that facility, I do not understand this debate.
Good morning, first of all, um, we as a company, uh, I represent A.D. Morgan, uh, we're based out of Tampa. Uh, we have built, we have done at least nine armories around the state of Florida, including Bartow, Lake Wales, Lakeland. We also, we got approved for Palmetto also, um, we haven't had any problems with barbed wire in regards to the citizens around any armory that we have, that we have built, so.
I wouldn't suspect you did.
I would imagine, Mayor, when you walk out and you see people in camo and, uh, you see.
Microphone, please.
Equipment that's armored vehicles, sometimes tracked personnel carriers, gun turrets. You probably pretty much know what's going on across the street from you. And I would imagine a, a, a fence or any other secure feature wouldn't surprise you or, or cause diminution in the value of your neighborhood that wasn't there already. It's, it's an armory. And, and armories have been in local communities around the country since probably the beginning of the military. And frankly, they're a great service to the national defense as well as emergency relief functions. And they have equipment, including weaponry, that needs to be secured.
So I think, we have a motion in a second to approve as-is, but I think that, and I don't know that we need to put in about the future part of the fence, but you've got the message if that can be worked out some way. And I know federally, there's a lot of different things you have to go through, but, you know, I think that's the, the sentiment. We want it to look the same and not look like we're doing it halfway.
Right, yeah.
Alright. So we have the motion in a second, I think the motion wants to stay as-is by the motioner.
Yeah.
Yep, in a second, yeah.
Pardon my informality.
Alright, so, well, we've had discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero, thank you. We are going to take a five-minute recess. It's ten-ten, so let's be back at ten-fifteen. Thank you very much. Yes. Says City Administration. Mr. Williams, are you taking this one?
I believe it was four-ten.
Seven D.
Okay.
We did seven D already?
Yeah, we already did seven D.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Ah.
Corey Fortin.
I'm enlightened.
Policy Planning Procedures and Real Estate Administrator. We recently received bids on city-owned properties that were previously deemed surplus and suitable for affordable housing. I will go through the details of the parcels, as well as walk you through the bids and the product proposed. The bid on one oh two Seventeenth Avenue West was brought before the Affordable Housing Committee for review on August fifteenth. Although we had not received the formal bids from DOMCA, on the property at five twenty Nineteenth Street East, the Affordable Housing Committee also reviewed that parcel based on an email that I had received from Christopher Brown of DOMCA, indicating that a bid would be forthcoming. At that meeting, the Affordable Housing Committee came to the conclusion that they did not find the project proposed to be a good fit. They were concerned about the quality of housing and the creativity of the project. I have included at the end of my agenda packet, a copy of the memo provided from the Affordable Housing Committee after that meeting. Florida Statute one six six point oh four five one defines the requirements for disposition of municipal property for affordable housing. I've given you all this statute. I am not going to read through the whole thing unless you'd like me to.
No, ma'am.
That's okay.
Okay. So Parcel one oh two Seventeenth Avenue West is a point six five zero two acre parcel located in the central CRA, excuse me, across from the wastewater treatment facility. It is zoned T four O and has an appraised value of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The bid is for fifty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars for an affordable housing project after offering modern hurricane-rated, two-bedroom, one-bath tiny homes. The scope of the project is for minimal modification of the existing lot, allocating ten micro parcels with infrastructure utilities such as electrical, water, sewer, and an access road to be constructed over a several-month period with delivery and installation of ten single-family homes twelve months from completion of the infrastructure. Each unit takes approximately three to seven days. Sorry, here's the proposal. From completion of infrastructure, oh, sorry, three to seven days for installation. The next several slides that I will show you will provide information on the units proposed. DOMCA suggests that the problem is there are sixty-one percent of families that cannot afford one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in housing. It's a twelve-plus-month waiting time to get any accessory dwelling unit, tiny home or house. Nineteen hundred dollars a month is the average rent in the U.S. with a one-year lease. There are more than seven million affordable homes needed today. They propose that their accessory dwelling units are a solution. You can select an under sixty thousand dollar fully furnished unit. You can preorder it and get it in three to six months. It's great for short or long-term living and/or rental, and it creates communities and helps people. They have proposed two different units. One is a home for fifty-eight thousand dollars. It's four hundred and thirty square feet with two bedrooms, a full bathroom, a kitchen, living room, and fully furnished. The second model is called a Home Plus for sixty thousand. It's a four hundred and thirty-square-foot home with two bedrooms, full bathroom, a larger kitchen, two entry doors, a living room, and is also fully furnished. DOMCA claims that their product has sustainability and can sustain up to a hundred and fifty mile-per-hour winds. It's a metal frame construction design, water-resistant, and energy-efficient. There is a list of what is included in the DOMCA's homes. There are few that come with additional fees such as the Smart Lock System, the Smart Home System, and the washer and dryer. The other items are included. They say that their product is eco-friendly. It has an easy plug-and-play installation. It's compact, efficient, and solar-ready. It saves up to seven thousand kilowatts and five thousand carbon dioxide annually per unit. It's eco-friendly waste management and saves up to thirty percent of water. One acre of land can accommodate ten single-family DOMCA houses. And they are showing you three different formats. DOMCA also submitted two bids on the property located at five twenty Nineteenth Street East. This, sorry, this is a one-acre parcel located in the central CRA with an appraised value of two hundred and eighteen thousand. Both proposals are for the same product as previously shown. The first proposal is for twenty thousand dollars. The scope of the project involves large tree removal and grading, new surveys to allocate twelve to fifteen micro parcels, plans drafted, and utilities such as water, sewer, and electricity to be pulled to each unit location with concrete pads poured for each unit with anchors placed, an access road paved and driveways paved, minor landscaping, and delivery and installation of twelve to fifteen homes in twelve months from completion of the infrastructure. They will offer these completed two-bedroom, one-bath, single-family homes with a yard to consumers at a price of a hundred and fifty thousand. Home buyers can acquire financing for less than a thousand dollars a month to own, plus insurance, taxes, and utilities. The second bid on this parcel is for fifteen thousand dollars. The remainder of the scope in the timeline is the same, but with eight to ten micro parcels and tiny homes. On a further note, on October, oh, sorry, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, CRA Director Jeff Burton reached out to the city to indicate that the CRA had purchased the property located at five twenty Nineteenth Street East in two thousand and three for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and deeded it to the city in two thousand and nine for ten dollars. The CRA also purchased five nineteen Eighteenth Street East in two thousand and three for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and deeded it to the city in two thousand and nine for ten dollars as well. That property has an assessed value of a hundred and thirty-six thousand. The CRA would like to have these two properties transferred back to be used for workforce, single-family, owner-occupied residential use. The intent is to have these parcels placed in a land trust. These proposals are now before you for consideration, and because all of the proposals are for below fair market value, it requires a public hearing.
Any questions, Ms. Fortin, before we go into public hearing and then discussion? All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, anyone wishing to speak, come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Christopher Brown, two-six-one-seven Bertania Road, Sarasota. Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor and Council members. Thank you so much for hosting us here. So as you just heard, we, DOMCA, we have proposed to do something with these parcels that are sitting here to allocate affordable housing and provide affordable housing solution for families in Bradenton City. So our product is extremely durable. I think with the past two disasters that we've have occurred here, we've seen that traditional housing faults under the sustained winds of some of these extreme weather circumstances. So when our product is rated at one fifty as it stands, we also pour concrete pads and secure anchors that improve the rating to nearly two hundred miles per hour. That we can easily say that this is a better solution for long-term dwelling for families in Bradenton City. The other issue, of course, is the affordability. So when a family who's paying nearly two thousand dollars a month in rent indefinitely to someone else's mortgage, the idea of creating long-term security for their family doesn't exist. So we're proposing to offer solutions for both of those with this. So as you saw in the presentation, our first parcel that we made a proposal on was the Seventeenth Avenue West property. That one was incorrectly marked on the county site. The county appraisal site listed it as one acre when it's actually point six five acres. So our initial proposal for ten units was incorrect. We would only be able to do five or six of them. Of course, new surveys would need to be shot and following setback rules and all those kind of things to make sure precisely where these would be placed. The second proposal on the Eighteenth Street East property, that one being one acre in size, of course, is much more amicable. There's a lot of tree clearing that needs to be done, and of course, the infrastructure needs to be placed in order for us to execute this. But we are confident that we can deliver our products and set up something that's not only appealing to the eye and sensitive to the community, but also offering both those solutions that I first detailed there. So we're here to answer any questions about what our proposal is and see if we can move forward with the project. As we, as is obvious, our proposal amount is much smaller than what's asked for.
All right, thank you. Any questions? I don't know if we can get questions here. Should we close the, I think we gotta ask them. They're the only ones here. I think it's appropriate. No questions? I can start out. How did you come up with the offer values for the property?
Well, basically, in order to create affordable housing, we need to be able to offer our product once we've done all of the infrastructure build, the clearing, the lot, the grading, the surveys, the installation, all those different factors. We want to be able to offer our product, like we said, at one fifty, and in order to do that, our price has to be much lower. So if we were to, you know, suggest affordable housing, it has to be affordable at the end.
One of the things that concerns me on the Seventeenth Avenue property is it's right next to our reclamation facility. And also, just going with staff, we had an agreement with somebody, but I'm sure that's probably gone by the wayside now with a young lady that was trying to build something there that's probably gone away?
I think it has gone away.
Yes.
This, this was publicly let and as a requirement of law to take surplus property and set it forward to the public for purposes of affordable housing, and that's really why we're before you.
So anything that was off that, what she had come to us for a senior housing, I believe, or something, maybe you, somebody else remembers a little bit about it, but, but it's never come to.
I think it was pre-COVID, maybe, even, I remember hearing things about it.
Yeah, so that's gone away. So, all right. And then the other was, and I know we've done this in the past, where we've given some property, and then all of a sudden, when it's built, the astronomical price that was put on it in a couple areas that we basically gave the property away. So if we would ever even consider some of this, I would say that there has to be something memorialized of the cost.
You know, to start with, it's going well below appraisal cost of the property. We conducted an appraisal as required by law. And what was the appraisal, Ms. Fortin, for the Seventeenth Street? I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, Seventeenth Avenue and First Street?
It was four hundred and twenty thousand.
And the.
We actually had it adjusted because as he indicated, it was originally listed on the property appraisers as a one-acre parcel. He pointed out, sorry, Mr. Brown pointed out, and I got in touch with him, and it is in fact only point six five, so the appraisal was modified to four twenty.
As adjusted acreage, point six five acres, is that correct? Okay. And so it significantly lessed fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty. Typically, if we would do anything like that, we put a lure on it, a land use restriction agreement, just to start as a starting point. I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Moore?
That was gonna be a little bit where I was going, is just a little bit more information. I see the units. But what does it look like, and are you actually like plating it and then selling it off? You know, I guess, I'm, I'm, I know what the unit looks like, but I don't know what this little micro community is gonna look like.
So I just wanted to briefly address the appraisal number that we came up with. It just hit me. So when we looked at the Eighteenth Street parcel that's one acre in size, it was, the lowest appraised value was fifty-four thousand. So when we made the proposal for the Seventeenth Avenue West property, we just chose that as a starting mark. Secondly, when it comes to the arrangement of the communities as we kind of envision them, of course, the, the property on Eighteenth Street East is, is much more amicable. It's a square. It's an acre. The one on, on Seventeenth Avenue West is kind of an obtuse shape that, that doesn't exactly allow for the centralized road, as you saw in our presentation. We have a few different setups that would look much like this, where we would work with the city to have roads paved and, you know, public utilities in place that would give this a community feel. We're looking for this to not, you know, be smooth around the edges, and people feel very comfortable calling it home. So yeah, the arrangement of it is very much in lieu of working with the city, with development and Corey about what this ultimate final project would look like. So this is Igor.
Yeah, my name is Igor Falyak, sixty-eight-one, thirty-four-seven, you know, western Bradenton. So what I wanna add, explain basically, what we're trying to do with this whole project. We, we try to make the basically affordable houses affordable for younger generation because we see a lot of those opportunity lands, right, when they have basically trailer houses for fifty-five-plus communities. But we don't really have a lot of communities where young generation can actually live there and potentially have a place called home, right? That's really important. So we see in a lot of different states, this initiative sexually start rolling back. You start going through the reason behind it because we need new American dream, more affordable than the traditional housing is. Because traditional housing in the city of Bradenton, money, right now, we're looking close to three hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. So we try to cut this in half and create this opportunity to new generation, Gen Z in particular, because they, they don't even have enough money to basically even rent anything. They just don't have it. They live with their parents because that's the only one opportunity they have today. So that's the reason we here, and that's the reason our offer probably a little bit lower than what we supposed to put. But that's the reason behind it because we really wanna make this project affordable to new generation to come.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The area, the area that you're speaking of is in my ward and my CRA, our CRA. You're absolutely right with your numbers in terms of what's affordable and what's not affordable. And in that particular area, we definitely need affordable housing. But I think we also need affordable housing that's comparable to what's already around it. And affordable shouldn't necessarily mean you've got to compromise on, I don't know, aesthetics of some sorts, you know? It, we can tell from the, the models that yes, it would be affordable because it's something that you just kinda plop and place. I saw where it looked like it was four hundred and thirty square feet for both, the, the plus size with the larger kitchen. So with the larger kitchen, what are you, what are you losing?
So basically, the, the, the first plan, the home, when you enter the unit, there's basically a smaller kitchenette, if you will, to the left. What we did was rework the plans and put it in the back corner so that when you walk in, it's just a bigger living, open space for a living room and like an island with a kitchen you would feel more comfortable cooking in with shelves and things built in to make it more livable long-term.
So it's more of an open.
Right. And also, I, I must mention, we did have Jeff Burton from the CRA and some other local people come and tour this. And I can just say, from a personal standpoint, when you walked inside this structure, that it's an open floor plan. Traditional housing that's even been suggested along in these chambers have been for shipping containers. Shipping containers are eight feet wide by forty feet long, three hundred and twenty square feet. It's like you're in a long hallway. And this is basically a square that's twenty by twenty, two feet wide, and it's got an open floor plan. So when you walk inside, it feels like you're in a home. I toured it with six, seven people. I toured it with six, seven people inside and myself, and we weren't bumping into each other. So the idea that a, a family with even two children and, uh, could occupy this in comfort and have a yard, um, for that price, like we mentioned, about a thousand dollars a month, um, just including taxes, but, um, it's attainable for people to create, you know, a future for their family. That's kind of what we're proposing here.
So you're talking about building a little community within a community?
Exactly. And mobile home courts, as you know, have been in this area for decades, and people are happy to occupy them. And those things are not hurricane rated. The, the disasters proved. My mother-in-law lives in Englewood. The thing was torn open like a tin can. And ours are, like, we just had that direct hit in Sarasota, C S D Key, we're about a mile from C S D Key with the unit, and there wasn't a scrap of damage. These are high-density windows, high-quality materials that aren't going anywhere for decades, so...
And I also wanna mention something about the community. So we create different, different colors for the units to basically match the existing communities. Because what we do, we actually have a walnut. We have, black is a little bit different because it's not really designed for Florida, but walnut and white is really fitable and suitable to the existing community, doesn't look actually different. It looks like small community inside of the community, and you, it's hard to tell that this is just a mobile home, but this has nothing to do with mobile. It looks like a small, single-family house, like, from, from the distance. It'll be more modern, basically, put it in the perspective.
Other questions, council? Yes, Councilman Kramer?
Where have you had success with this, in the state of Florida?
So we just started this project, sir, uh, just not, like, two, two, two and a half years ago. We go through so many different processes to get approval for all of this because this is a new way of constructing and is the new way of delivering houses fast enough because the people need it now. So we go through all this process. We get approved, basically, by the city codes. We get approved by engineering, by architectural plans, and we actually slowly start to deploying this unit across Florida. Like, it, it's all a starting process. It just takes a lot of time to actually go through all this because this is completely new product for, for all our, like, communities where we live in today. It's, it's a little bit different.
I have the engineering plans for, um, a structure we're attempting in Hillsborough County, uh, all stamped up in approval, formal papers for that, and energy calculations for that as well. Um, it's like Igor indicated, we're, we're breaking new ground here. We're looking to offer something new to the community, so it's, it's taking time to, to gain ground. I think that a flagship project like this, um, in a, a well-established community like Bradenton City, that obviously has a need, a lot of families that make less than a hundred thousand a year, that could never conceive of owning their own home, it would really make a mark for the community and for the country to set a standard for something that is very possible. People nowadays are acknowledging that your life is lived outside your home, not just within your home. And so if you have security and safety and a place to call home, and, and it's not going anywhere, then you might actually have more opportunity in stability and safety and, and security to seek your life outside of your home.
Thank you.
Um, yes.
We're in Hillsborough County.
Um, Stefanie?
Mr. Perry?
I wanna commend you for being creative.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And, and there may be places where this would be appropriate, um, and I'm not saying it's not appropriate there, but there's a couple of things I wanna point out, is that what we're actually doing is putting this out as a surplus property, and you're giving us a proposal to say you're gonna put a prefabricated building on it and that it's resilient, and I appreciate that. And the engineering specs you have probably have met, uh, building safety codes as it relates to engineering of the structure itself. But what we don't see is what concerns me, which is we don't have a site plan to start with. I mean, how would it take that point six five acres and bring in roadway, curb and gutter, utility, um, and, and all these other types of infrastructure that has to be built if we were to approve that? And we're being asked to approve this, just basically on your proposal to put a prefabricated house on the property with no detail about those issues, uh, to, to, to start with. And we don't even know if it would meet spec requirements, the site itself, to do that, um, which are technical requirements, our engineering department and our, our planning department to start with. The second thing is, is that if you subdivided the property, um, I don't know if you could get lending on it, which, which might be an interesting issue. Uh, because, uh, because if we put a, if we put a lure on the property and said, "You can't sell the property for any more than a hundred and fifty thousand so that we maintain it at a certain workforce or affordable, uh, uh, level," that's always makes lending much more difficult. Um, and, and so you've got that particular issue. It's somewhat unproven, as you, you, you readily admitted. And if you look at the cost for the four hundred and fifty, uh, foot, foot, for the four hundred and fifty square foot unit, um, at a hundred and fifty thousand at a sales price, that's three hundred and thirty-three, uh, dollars per square foot, which is kinda high for, y- you know, this type of housing. And we have realtors on, on council, and I won't go any further because I don't know that, but, but three hundred and thirty-three, three dollars a square foot for four hundred and fifty, uh, square foot room is, is kind of expensive. Um, I'm not so sure that this is the appropriate product, got the appropriate location to do it. But I really appreciate you guys bringing it to us, yeah.
Creative.
Um, Mrs. Moore?
Um, I, I appreciate the product, um, and the resiliency of it, and I don't think that there is not a place for that in our plans. Um, but having served with this board in the, in the hat of the Community Redevelopment Agency, I get the sense that currently we're on a path with a vision that is, I would, I mean, the only way I can think to describe it is maybe a little bit more grandiose, a little bit more, you know, impact. Um, and while I think there might be a place for the actual product in the type of, in the path that I think that, I, you know, I, I don't wanna speak for my council, uh, members, but I, I believe that we're, we're kind of rowing in the same direction of, there might be a place for the product, but I think as far as the planning goes, I thi- I dare I say, I'll just say for myself, I'd like to see something a little bit more creative, a little, something with a little bit more of a wow factor. Um, I echo his sentiments that right now I'm lacking in some specificity about how, you know, like, just the nuts and bolts of how we make it affordable, how we keep it affordable, what it looks like, how we create community, um, and then really down to the infrastructure, you know, making sure everything's flowing right. Uh, that's a really huge concern, I think, for this current council. Um, so I guess where I'm landing is, I don't necessarily think the product is completely something that we could dismiss out of ha- uh, hand, but as far as the planning part of it, I would like to see us take our time, explore some of the things that we've been studying and learning about with our CRA hats on, and potentially take our time with that.
But obviously, this is city council meeting, so when you...
Correct, yes, yes.
But all right, thank you. I think we've discussed enough, and we're still in the public hearing, so let's see if there's anyone else, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you for taking your time.
All right, anyone, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name and who you are.
Jeff Burton, on behalf of the Bradenton CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency. We bought the land. I remember when the CRA bought the land, I was still working here. Jerry West bought it for a library. And most likely, it was transferred to the city to put it underneath the city's insurance policy. I'm not gonna go back unless you really want me to, to find out why. Uh, we'll pay the twenty dollars back. And, uh, we want the land back, and it is for an affordable housing use, and we are in the process of putting something together. So with all due respect to the city, we'd like our land back, and, uh, we appreciate that. So that's all I'm gonna say.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Possessions.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, Chair will entertain a motion. And Mr. Rudesel, does it have to be a motion to approve or deny separately, or what does it have to be?
I, I think at this point, we probably just need some direction to, to staff. I mean, we, there was, you had the bids from the, from the private individuals. I don't think you necessarily need a motion as to whether or not, uh, if you need to accept that. Um, if you, if the intent is transfer the, the property to the CRA, um, then I think that it would be a motion to, to direct staff to, to start that process and authorize the mayor to execute that deed.
Have we, other than discussed that, or how is that gonna be?
We discussed it to, to the extent that the CRA is interested in both properties. However, there's a caveat to that, which is, we are still exploring whether that, um, that Seventeenth Avenue property may be related to a retention area for City Park. It could have a purpose, I was told recently, um, in order to, with our City Park design. So with all due respect to Dr. Burton, I may not want his twenty dollars. I might wanna keep the land and use it for...
And I think that's...
That's not one of the two that he's asking for.
That's not one of the two that he's wanting.
He's asking for the two out east, the five...
Excellent.
And I agree with that on, and I think with our reclamation plant being there, we may wanna keep that as more of a beautiful entrance site on Seventeenth that we can for the future.
I don't need all the beauty.
Yeah, yeah. Instead of, you know, people moving in and moving next to an airport, then you complain about the airport.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, as I understand it, we're required by state statute to look at any surplus property that we have and, and bring it forward and, and consider what might become of the property as, as opposed to just sitting back and holding on to stuff without people ever knowing that we had this sort of thing. However, I agree that the property across from the wastewater treatment plant, it may have a better value to the citizens by h- having it be something that either we use it for the treatment plant, we use it for the, um, City Park proposal, that there, there's, that, that property, I think, I don't, I don't think it serves its greatest best use by us putting maybe four or five little teeny tiny houses on it because it's kind of at the center of three oh one and Seventeenth. It's a very, uh, congested area. Um, I'm not certain that I would want one of my family members to buy a tiny house there and, and have children go play in the yard kind of thing because of all of the, the traffic and such around it. Uh, we also have, um, our CRA director coming and saying that there's, the other parcels are something that the CRA board has been working towards and may be looking at. So unless we are required to make a decision right at this time, I don't, I don't want to get rid of any of the parcels.
My understanding is, Mayor, Counselor, my understanding is that state law requires us to look at our surplus property to see if any of it is suitable, uh, for, for, um, affordable housing. And that, that, that was part of about three different initiatives the state took, I think, two years ago when they started to battle affordable housing issues. Is that right, Ms. Fortin? You have more detail?
That is correct. And we already determined they were all surplus. However, putting them on that list doesn't mean you have to dispose of them at any time. City Council has the right to review and reject any proposal at any time, for any reason.
What Mr. Rudesel's saying right now is we can just say no action today on either one of them.
Yes, I think if, if the, based on what I'm hearing, I think if the council wanted to make a motion not to pursue either of the proposals that were presented today, I think that would be sufficient.
Well, I'm not interested in pursuing a proposal on the Seventeenth Avenue site for tiny hometown. Um, I am interested in having the CRA discuss further with the CRA director, the, what he has come forward and, and asked about. So would you prefer a motion to reject, um, the proposals dealing with tiny homes?
For both properties?
For both properties.
I think that would be fine, yes.
That's, that's my motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Ms. Barnaby to, um, reject both purchases with the, uh, Damka Company at this time. And we have a second by Ms. Coachman. Had a lot of discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Thank you, so, um, and then I would suggest that maybe Mr. Burton and Mr. Perry get together and discuss a few things, and then it can be brought through the CRA and then back to the council after discussion. Thank you, all right. Moving forward, Madam Clerk?
Item seven F is a public hearing for the JAG grant.
Hmm. Who do we have the pleasure of this morning still?
Good morning, Mayor, Counselor. Uh, this is our, uh, annual proposal or submission to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for our annual JAG award. It's a formula-based award. Uh, it was, uh, twenty-four thousand, nine forty-one this year. Uh, it is to purchase, uh, eight rapid IDs as well as forensic extraction software. Um, this was publicly advertised both on September twentieth, and then with the delay of the last council, get on October twenty-third. Um, we've met all of the public advertisement requirements, however, does require a public hearing.
All right, any questions of Mr. Giddens before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, yeah, thank you. I move to approve the proposed plan for fiscal year 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Giddens. Madam Clerk?
Item seven G is the first reading for Ordinance four zero five zero. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Bradenton Land Use Regulations, Chapter two point oh, Administration and Procedures, amending Section two point one point three point one, Composition and Terms of T L P B Members, and Section two point one point three point three, Functions, Powers, and Duties. Amending Chapter four point zero, General Regulations, four point one point three five, Sidewalks, Providing for Codification, Providing for the Repeal of Ordinances in Conflict, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date. The second reading and public hearing are scheduled for December eighteenth.
Okay.
Item seven F, or H, is the first reading for Ordinance four zero five one. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, Vacating a Platted Ten-Foot Alley as Shown on the Platte of the High School Addition to Manatee, Recorded in Book Two, Page forty-one of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, and More Particularly Described Herein, Being Generally Located North of Fifth Avenue Drive East, South of Manatee Avenue East, West of Second Street East, and East of First Street East, Providing for Recordation in the Official Records, Providing for Severability, Providing for Repeal of Ordinances in Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. And the second reading and public hearing is also scheduled for December eighteenth.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, hold on one second.
Ordinance four zero five zero, there's been some sort of problem.
All right.
An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, Amending Bradenton Land Use Regulations, Chapter two point zero, Administration and Procedures, Amending Section two point one point three one, Composition and Terms of T L P B Members. Is that correct? Yes, that's the correct one? Okay. To Modify Quorum Requirements in Section two point one point three three, Functions, Powers, and Duties, To Amend the Functions and Duties of the Tree and Land Preservation Board, Amending Chapter four point zero, General Regulations, Section four point one point three five, Sidewalks, To Modify Right-of-Way Landscaping Requirements and Add a Tree Species Matrix, Providing for Codification, Providing for the Repeal of Ordinances in Conflict, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date. I apologize for that mix-up.
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, that the ordinance that was listed on the agenda did not match the actual title block that was on the ordinance, so...
So it's corrected in the record now?
Yes.
And the second reading and public hearing will be twelve eighteen twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving forward.
Item eight A is the West Coast Inland Navigation District Grant Acceptance. Item eight A is the West Coast Inland Navigation District Grant Acceptance.
Welcome again.
Good morning again. Uh so this is our proposal for execution of agreement by the mayor with uh West Coast Inland Navigation District for the purchase of a a boat we were able to apply for and receive approval for funding for a new boat for three hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars using those funds. Um the funds are uh sub-recipient through Manatee County, through the W C I N D District um out of, I think, Venice area. So um making a uh submission to you all today. I would only note, and I maybe Councilman Kramer can correct me, this is the first opportunity we'd have as a police department to purchase a new boat in uh my lifetime, so it's um it's certainly a great opportunity. We'd ask for approval on that.
Any questions?
He's not as old as me, just.
I concur with this statement.
All right, I just wanted to make a comment before we, we, I guess, get a motion and vote on this. I didn't say anything. I was getting one and eight. The uh what you did to come in and it kind of, I think, behind the eight ball a little bit and what you were able to do to pull this out of the ashes and bring it up is duly noted. So we appreciate that, and I don't know if the council knows or that, but the deadline had passed. And uh Mr. Giddens did a great job with his ability to figure out a way to get this back on that we can get this grant because, you know, we, I think we see, even with these storms, maybe we didn't need them, maybe we did, but at some point we continue to have some of these storms. Our waterway is important if we, we have the right boat, so.
I appreciate that, and true as well, yeah, we we were able to get the grant.
Good, so, uh the chair want to attain a motion to, I guess, accept?
Uh it would be accepted and authorization for the executed contract, once approved by Manatee County.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Mr. Kramer.
Second.
All right, thank you. And then, uh, all right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one. Approved five to zero. Thank you very much. All right, City Administration. Is that you, Mr. Perry?
Yes, Mayor.
Or Mr. Lance, or Cory? It's fun looking out at everybody and they're all looking at something down in their hands, so the old days you didn't have anything to do, now you have to keep working.
Is Elmo ready to go?
I'm sorry, sir?
Is Elmo ready to go?
Yes.
Every time we hear referred to as Elmo, all I can think about is that, that song.
Mayor, item number eight B is the City Administration Authorization to Negotiate Property Purchase for five oh four Ninth Avenue West. And I want to give a little background on this, this item. This particular property had backflow problems and it was flooded, basically. Uh it's very near to a lift station. And some of the configuration of the lateral from that home to the lift station and the hydraulics of of how that works had caused it to flood, I think, two times in the past prior, prior to this flooding incident. And so in in the the individuals that own that home had worked with Pam Skelding to try to get a ship grant after they were flooded out for emergency um housing. And they have basically been housed in an Airbnb since the date of the incident, uh which was, I want to say, probably about a month or so, maybe a little bit longer, about five weeks ago. Uh so they've been in there for a while. In talking with uh staff at Public Works and Mr. Williams and some other folks, we believe that it's in the best interest to purchase that property uh because it had flooded repeatedly. And we don't think that we can remediate the problem with repairs other than a host of other expensive repairs to the collection system and and the lift station. We would use the property, basically, for an onsite expansion of the lift station repairs or onsite retention, basically, for flooding situations in that particular lift station. The property, again, is located at five oh four Ninth Avenue West. This is a photograph of the property. The front of the property, and when I spoke with consul, consulars individually, they said, is that the property on the other side of the, the tracks right there that's depicted in that bottom photo? A lot of them did, and I said, yeah, it is. And so we basically, the first step was to get an appraisal. I I'd actually contacted the property owner personally, and I wanted to see uh what their appetite was to potentially have us purchase the property, opposed to condemn it or or otherwise, to try to acquire it in a negotiated disposition. And they said, that's exactly what we'd like you to do, is purchase the property. So we got an appraisal. The appraisal came in uh through Curtis Hunt. And I have all the photographs in here of the property. It's fairly small, it's about fifteen hundred square feet, one-bedroom home. I think built in the seventies. And Mr. Hunt, we just got his appraisal yesterday. Um it was two hundred thousand dollars even for the appraisal of the fifteen hundred square foot home that's depicted in the photographs. What I'd like to do is get authority to negotiate to the potential acquisition of this property. The funding source would not be general fund reserve. It would basically be out of the utility fund because it is a utility lift station type issue problem. And uh that's what I'm asking for. I will point out that I received a very strange uh market value. It looked like it was one of those things, how much is your house worth, and you get online? And it came in at like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yeah, so that's where we're starting, but there are options available. A negotiated disposition at or near the appraised price or other options. And so we're trying to get those folks taken care of. Um we think that it would be best interest of our utility system, the city, the landowner and the like who doesn't want to be there. They had been flooded again in the past and had put, I think, some, so, a few twenty, thirty thousand dollars into when they had to do the prior repairs as well. We did the repairs and then they did upgrades, is what I'm told. I haven't confirmed that, trying to get confirmation, but that's the gist of this request. But and the motion related there to it is to get authority to negotiate. Ultimately, the purchase of that property would come back with counsel for for final approval.
So you just need a motion to start the negotiations?
I have, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't think about this the um other day when we were talking. What, what is the problem with our lift station that's flooding their house? I mean, because there, it's the railroad track, you know, it's got, how is that water, is it backing up?
I could have, perhaps, um-
The plumbing or something?
If they have familiarity with that, I can tell you that the lateral that comes out of that house goes pretty much directly into the lift station. And that is not typically proper collection methods because not only, you know, typically a collection pipe, there would be a lateral from the home to the collection main. And the collection main would transport it to another lift station through a series of manholes and other piping where it's located. Being so close to the lift station, when the lift station fails, there's probably back pressure, is what I'm assuming.
So that, so whose great idea was that to send a private lateral?
Well, probably it's just timing, the seventies.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, because it would have been.
You know, it's one of those things too that, that there's probably no gravity in 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 my
Yeah.
family in our funeral home in nineteen seventy-five. When we put our lateral in, it was supposed to be septic, put the lateral in on the property, and then it hit the the main pipe, and the main pipe went uphill. So as we know, nothing flows uphill. So we now have a lift station forty-eight years later.
Yeah, and I think being so close to that lift station.
They thought, instead of them, their lateral going to the main
Collection.
Collection and then go to a
Right. Whereas if the lift station failed and it went to a collection, it would possibly still back up. But I think being directly at the lift station is what causes a very high volume.
And this has been something ongoing even before, well, she left the room, but before all of you were in the room in two thousand thirteen, when I was on the council, it happened then too.
And and I'm familiar with this home, I'm familiar with it. Yeah, I just wanted, I, after I thought about it, I was like, well, how were we, you know, causing that? But that makes sense.
Makes sense. So we're looking for a motion for, uh, to give the administration the authority to negotiate, then to bring back to us for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Coker, I think we have a second.
Second.
All right, Ms. Moore. All right, we've had discussion. Start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Okay, approved. Mr. Perry.
Uh Mayor, the next item eight C is the city's administration uh brief on disaster recovery emergency program. Uh you may remember, I believe it was at a special meeting that we had extending um one of the de, the emergency declarations. We, I asked for permission to explore, uh trying to do a cash assistance program, basically, for folks um that have been affected by the hurricanes. Um in looking at the totality of what FEMA does as it relates to um emergency assistance, I think they do a pretty good job and they've already distributed uh some cash payments, basically for cleaning. I think it, you know, it starts with that and then it obviously works up for different categories. But we are not in a financial situation um with any certainty as it relates to the cost of these storms to the city in order to do that program right now. And we have been focusing our efforts on working um with with uh FEMA for reimbursement of of both preventative measures and and other um response and recovery funds. And so I don't think we have the bandwidth and I don't think we have the certainty to proceed with that. I just wanted to brief counsel.
Yeah, and that's what we had brought up, where we talked about possibly helping some people with some above and beyond a replacement of something
Right.
that was there. And I've talked with a lot of people, and especially your area, Lisa, and nobody seems to be really doing what that's happening yet. So I think if, I think it would be good if we looked at possibly something in the future, if all of a sudden some permitting and things come in. And 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 Robin can talk about permitting. We're waiving a lot of permit fees to do things, we're doing things to try to help people. That, so, I mean, we are doing things. That plan that we had kind of thought about at that time hadn't been a windstorm hit us a week later. So, you know, there's a lot of things that I still think could be out there, but the opportunity when it arises can be discussed at that point.
May I?
Yes.
Um I think just to piggyback on that, I think what we've learned in the past month is a lot, and I I really commend staff for working with FEMA so diligently and and um I'm impressed, really, with with the unfortunate circumstance that has accelerated staff's learning and what to do in a post-disaster situation. Um and I think that maybe the focus later, you know, could be just with that knowledge that you have now, how to best pull into the circle of the FEMA, uh you know, cycle and and letting them kind of do what they do and assist us in that regard.
Yeah, and I think there's some things that that we learned, you know, council-wise, administrative-wise, that we were jumping to do before we said, oh crap, here it comes again. And that really was reality. And so I think we can say great job to everybody, and then really how it works to the future, so. All right, so that's update on that. Go on to emergency procurement report.
Under item D, emergency procurement report, I am going to put on um the overhead of report. I don't think I blow this up because it's a fairly small grant, I probably do, you better be your eyes and might as well. Yeah, if you could zoom in a little bit.
Is there a portion that can be?
That's good.
Is that painful?
It is, and I apologize, yep. I wanted to br- bring this to council's attention and and mayor's attention. Under our emergency procurement policy, which was utilized uh repeatedly due to these storms, I can authorize the expenditure, um and I have to report to council at the next meeting, and and I'm doing this. I will point out that this basically includes a lot of emergency purchases that were done um through efforts at the P S O C, but there's some that were done by the police department that I had not received for authorization and approval. Most of these all have received the forms um prior to the 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 purchase. And they were, in fact, you know, clearly emergencies, and I think the police were too, I just didn't receive the form, and they were in different locations, sometimes we didn't coordinate, and and I'm sure we might be able to rectify that. But I know they had purchased some items too, that were emergency purchases. Um it just didn't go through me, and it probably should have, but that's sometimes the way it goes when you're in the heat of battle, so to speak, that's all I'm saying about that. But I want, I want to point out some of these um on on the form, uh and and I can get that to you. The fire department for P S O C had to buy um food supplies, basically, for an uncertain period of time. And um we had to be able to store them. Uh so they ended up, because P S O C didn't have freezers, they had, they had a couple of freezers, but they were kind of regular-type freezers that didn't have the capacity to store that, and so they ran down to Home Depot and Lowe's and and bought some freezers um and and other things. You see the pre-filled, filled sandbags, um thank you to Brandy Colandrea. She actually had a very good contact at Carroll's Building Supplies, and we were able to get, I think, about four or five, six thousand bags through them, where tractor-trailers would come in and continue our distribution of sandbags, because we couldn't make them fast enough and and other issues. And we were able to basically distribute those to folks and 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 people took very high advantage of those sandbag distributions. The lines were long. And, you know, I think particularly after Helene with Milton coming in, people got really serious about sandbagging and the like. But but, so that was, you know, fairly sizable, twenty-eight thousand dollars. I remember a couple tractor-trailers coming in, I think Mayor was down there, and we all saw her come in and we're praising, you know, whatever we praised when they did come in, because it gave us additional supplies for a unending uh line of folks. Uh there's some other things-
Well, but let, let's
Yes, sir.
Just to stop there for a moment, so we can. Um I really think it's something we need to evaluate, staff time uh and everything, and go through and see if we can't be, have a stock of those pre-filled sandbags. Because when you say twenty-eight thousand dollars, how much are we spending for the staff time to fill and do all of that?
Right.
So I really think that's something we've learned from this. Let's evaluate, and plus, they're a lot better the way they're sewed and put and, you know, so I think that's something that, not that ours are bad.
Right.
But sometimes you got twenty-five guys filling them.
Yep.
We might have a better shot at having them be able to do something else.
Right.
So.
I will point out, and you know this, and, you know, we could talk about it because we were both down there, that those trucks, because of traffic, trying to get out of town and the like, um coming off I seventy-five, they would be delayed sometimes basically about half a day or a day, just to get down to us, the tractor-trailers and stuff.
If we have six thousand capacity space-wise, let's get six thousand of those there.
Maybe doing a little bit of both, yeah.
There, and then have the capability, if we run out of those, it may be more cost-efficient
You're right.
Have those pre-made.
Or a mixture of it, I think, you're right. It's a good thing to look at, no doubt. Um hopefully, we won't have that kind of.
But we've got time to prepare for next June first, to find that out.
But, yeah, and and, you know, hats go off to Public Works across the board in all of the the city um in being so, so diligent and hardworking and committed to the preventive measures we did. Um the debris, the priest Milton cleanup debris, the sandbagging efforts, the protective measures that were for the pre-positioning of of barricades, making sure our equipment got off the road and was protected and everything else, because everybody was on a long, long
Long haul.
Yeah, deployment, so to speak.
But one of the things that people will say, well, why do I pay more money to live in the city? Well, in the county, they have a pile of sand. You bring your own shovel and they give you the bags and you can fill them up. One of the benefits is that is probably sandbags when you need them. Um you get ten, but, and you can get ten a day, or ten, you know, it comes through.
If you have their ID.
Right, if you have their ID, but but I think that's one of the benefits so far that we can look at and say, at what cost, staff time, sand time and all that, if they can just deliver them in and, but I'm sure our public works department will give us a breakdown on that for, we got time.
Right.
You know, to get through it, maybe. No more of this.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So we also had to purchase six uh hydraulic message boards uh in order to let the public know what was kind of going on, where they could, you know, things they could do and where they could go and the like.
That are still being used now.
That will still be used, and and it's important to understand, these are emergency purchases, they are not necessarily what's going to be submitted at- emergency purchases. They are not necessarily what's going to be submitted as reimbursable to FEMA. Um, some of these will cover, and some of them will be a hundred percent reimbursable by FEMA. And, and, uh, I'm going to go into that in a minute, but just going down the emergency purchases, roof repairs. And so the entire roof was torn off of the facility maintenance, uh, not the facility maintenance, the vehicle maintenance, um, facility over at Public Works. And so we had to put a temporary roof on there. Um, and that was something that Erin was able to get a contractor, uh, and the folks at Public Works pretty quick. It's on there now. It protects all of the equipment, the vehicles, the supplies, materials that we have over there. It's really not a matter of choice of how to be put on there. Otherwise, every time it would rain, it would leak in there. I seen the photos of it yesterday from, uh, from the damage assessment, and it's just basically timbers. The entire roof rolled up. It was as- it looked like it was asphalt bladder kind of type of roof system. Um, then, the, the several categories are contractor repairs to infrastructure, um, as well as, as different types of, um, utility, um, systems, equipment. And some of that may be reimbursable, some of it may not be. Here's the problem with it, is that under public assistance category, I believe it's D, is public utilities. And if a storm hits your list station by a tree falling on it, sure, they'll reimburse, because it's obviously related to the wind from the storm. But if your list station wasn't operational, uh, beforehand, their obligation and, and, and program restores its, to its pre-storm condition. And you have to have maintenance records of that to show that it was adequately maintained. If you have things like clay pipes, like we have, and some of the corrosives in your collection system, and that's adding to it, in talking with our Hagerty partners, who I'll explain in a minute, they said, you got to look at it as, as the juice worth the squeeze, because you might have to do a lot of, lot of work to try to make that claim from FEMA. And the reality is, is you're not going to have supporting documents to meet their, their claim reimbursement requirements. And so we'll be working through that stuff. Some of it is clearly, like sandbags, a hundred percent reimbursable. Um, some of it, like the roof, a hundred percent reimbursable. The grappler that we bought, um, that's a, a John Deere wheel loader, but it has much more capacity to basically pick up heavy loads of C and D, probably a hundred percent reimbursable. We were lucky to get that, um, as well. We'd actually seen some, one of, I think it might have been a commercial hauler or a private hauler during, uh, during Helene that had that piece of equipment. And we said, boy, we wish we had that. Our guys had big grapplers and stuff like this, but this gave us a lot more mobility to get into smaller areas, particular down in, uh, the, the trailer parks on Twenty-seventh Street. And so you, you knew pretty good detail about that. And it's a great piece of equipment that we have. We might want to buy another one, quite frankly. Uh, but, but that's in there. That'll probably be a hundred percent reimbursable. Uh, Ring Power generators, um, Ring Power is a, a, a good partner of ours through Bearing Point. We had to buy, basically, and, uh, generators for our, some of these lift stations, because you can't have them going out. And some of them were so damaged that, uh, they either needed to be replaced or repaired, and, and a whole host of other, uh, did, both water distribution lines as, as well as, uh, the, the collection system lines. You can see those emergency repairs. And we had to get Woodruff and C-Squared and, 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 and some, you know, other folks out there to do it. I want to go to, so, so that's the list of emergency purchases. And as you look at the bottom of the list, it's really not depicted there. It's about three-point-one million dollars for all that. So, some of it, the disc filters is seven-hundred thousand, and we're looking at that right now. There, there's that number. Um, some of it's going to be a hundred percent reimbursable, and, and it's going to be on expedited basis. So I want to cover something, because the last emergency purchase i- on this form is Hagerty Consulting. So who is Hagerty Consulting? Hagerty Consulting is a, is a FEMA recovery reimbursement specialist. They have accountants and, and program, uh, managers who have dealt with FEMA reimbursement, the rules related to FEMA, uh, how things flow through FEMA and the process. And I, I don't want to get into great deal, detail of it, but I think it's probably worth a quick discussion, which is basically, you have to have an eligible local government, which we have, state, local, tribal. You have to have eligible facilities of ownership if you're seeking repair. You can either own them or lease them. We have this facility's roof. We have, again, I told you a little bit about the, uh, the fleet maintenance facility. Uh, there was a bulk storage overhead that was absolutely just mangled and destroyed over at Public Works that'll have to be removed and, you know, replaced, and maybe we'll replace it at the new facility and the like. But you, you have to have the eligible type of facilities, if you're looking into facilities for public assistance, and then eligible work. And that's where it gets a little bit sketchy, because you do have to have property maintenance records and operational maintenance records that show that you basically had an operational system. It was the damage some, from the storm that impacted it and caused a diminution and degre- degradation of the equipment. Um, and sometimes that's tricky, especially when you look at bridges and roads under that category. So moving forward, it's really about seven categories. The first one is de- debris operations, and that's an interesting category, because we'll end up spending probably about four to five million dollars on debris pickup, up, upward more. Yeah, I'm, I'm not surprised. But the good news is, uh, the good, the good news is, is that, that, that is an expedited project, and so we can get rapid recovery on those funds. We have to pay it out, because our contract with the debris haulers is between us and the hauler, but we'll get rapid reimbursement, um, from FEMA on that. The second one is, uh, uh, protective measures. And this, uh, storm, both Milton and Helene, was approved for protective measures. So those sandbags are example of protective measures. Again, um, under expedited, uh, reimbursement, we'll get that as well. Uh, you ultimately have to put, uh, the other category is road and bridges under C. D is water control facilities, which are all going to be mostly storm water, swift mud pro- projects, uh, drains and things like that. We have had some injury to some of our drain system through that. Uh, the big, a big category is buildings and equipment. I've talked about that. That includes equipment being, uh, chainsaws and vehicles and grapplers, like I talked about the grappler. Uh, and then public utility. And you're talking here about, you know, both collection, treatment, and, and, and at the potable water, uh, protect, potential processing issues. And the third category is parks and rec. And so there's a system for that public assistance. We've already gotten about, hmm, probably thirty percent through the system, which is we've conducted initial damage assessments to try to collect everything that was impacted through the storm within those categories I described and the cost associated with it. And we put in an RPA, a request for public assistance through the FEMA portal. We've done that. We've hired Hagerty. That'll be a hundred percent reimbursable. And then you have an applicant briefing, where you go, kind of go over what they've done, along with an exploratory call. We are having that today with the next step, which is the PDMG, or the FEMA Program Delivery Manager. So we'll have someone assigned. And the good news is, that person that's assigned is assigned for Debbie, Helene, and Milton. And so we don't have to kind of go to different PDMDDs to do that. Ultimately, they'll put together a project worksheet, and then we'll have a recovery scoping meeting with all the damage inventory. We'll show them what we have. Hagerty will tell us that the, this is the supporting documentation you need. Some of it will come back on expedited basis, and some of it will be a little bit longer for reimbursement. Generally speaking, the reimbursement on most of these items is seventy-five percent federal reimbursement under FEMA, twelve-point-five percent state, uh, uh, FDM reimbursement. But they've adjusted some of those rules too, to be a hundred percent reimbursement for things like, uh, already declared debris removal, if it's done within, I think it's ninety days. And we should be able to hit those marks. If we do have to build things back, and we build them back to a higher degree of resiliency, we're eligible for a surplus of five to fifteen percent on top of that, too. So as, uh, Councilwoman Lisa Gonzalez-Moore was pointing out, that, and, and Mayor too, we've learned a lot. We have not had a storm that has had that impact that I'm aware of, of Mr. Callahan, you know, in, in, as my predecessor, in talking with him, that he can remember either. And we got hit hard. We have a lot of damage, both in the community and the private sector. We have a lot of damage in, in the public sector as well. Uh, places like Pirate City, they, they had, got hit pretty good. Uh, we've got some pretty good photographs of the big steel batter size kind of collapsing over, and structural repairs to that are not going to be cheap. Uh, equipment I've talked about, and it's going to be, it's going to be a slog to get back to normal. But our team really has done a very good job at the administrative, uh, as well as operations level of trying to get this recovery both cleaned up. And, and I know that there's, there's shortcomings in that regard. But, you know, the, the trees that tumbled over by Veterans Memorial on, 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 uh, the Riverwalk or Rossi Park itself, they're on it. We'll, we'll get it fixed and get it back to normal condition. It's just going to take a little bit of time, and we'll make sure that if we can get reimbursed, we'll get reimbursed. That four million dollars, I don't know what, how much will actually have to come out of that directly related to this incident. I'm, I'm not there yet that I could even probably throw a dart and give you a general number, but it's nice to have it. And it was good of you all, um, maintaining and securing that funding, because when you think about it, you know, th- this was probably the most, the largest, most significant storm that the city's encountered in a long time. And it's, thank God, frankly, it wasn't a Cat Five, because when you have a Cat Three, everything gets knocked down that's standing upright. Stop signs, traffic signals, trees, roofs and all that stuff. But the Cat Five, when that comes through, the only thing that's left is a foundation. And by and large, we didn't have that. But we took pretty good punches, there's no doubt. So that's a quick summary on, on, on where we're at, emergency procurement report as well as FEMA. Any questions on that?
Yes, Ms. Vice Mayor Barnaby.
Um, Administrator Perry, can we get a better understanding of when FEMA, what their schedule is, where they're going, how they're do- it seems to me, it started out very piecemeal. I've had concerns from citizens saying, you know, I, they came down, they picked up one pile on my street and they went, you know, three streets over, kind of thing. So that's one concern. And the other concern is, I know that with FEMA, you have a ninety-day clock to get everything picked up. Well, we pretty much had three significant events. When did the ninety-day clock, clock start? Did it start with Debbie? Did it start with Helene? Did it-
So those are really good questions. We get updated advisements from FEMA that makes the rules as they go along. And, and that's not a slam on them. This is a very unique situation with those two storms. They have extended deadlines in certain cases, for sure. And it's kind of weird. You don't know when they're going to, you're going to get that letter. I get notification pretty much daily, uh, from them about, this is a change that helps you. Now you can combine Helene with Milton for debris. You don't have to separate them. Originally, you had to separate all the different debris. As far as the debris cleanup goes, can we get a schedule from FEMA? FEMA really doesn't get into the contractor, uh, chili at that level. They, that would be an issue with our, with our debris haulers. And it has proven to be difficult to get a clear direction on that. Uh, Tetra, is it Tetra Tech, I think, is the logistics contractor that, that documents all of the debris cleanup and other efforts related to it. So who's authorized, how many square yards they're bringing in, how they're separating it, where they're putting it, where it's ultimately being disposed of, things like that. And they have, uh, technology platforms also that I think the contractors use through Tetra Tech to show the places that have been, uh, cleaned up supposedly. At least there's been activity in the area. I think what becomes frustrating is you go, well, they're showing this red area, and I can sh- show four or five streets that didn't get picked up within it. And so that's kind of where we have to get to the operational level to interact with, with, um, the contractor themselves, whether it's DRC on the east side of, of the city, or, uh, Cirrus on the, on the west side of the city, um, relating to that. And some of it, they, like, initially right after, um, Milton, they started their efforts with vegetative, you know, green, what they call veg. Um, and, and, and they did a bunch of that. But then we also had a lot of C and D out in your area still, um, along the water, you know, the waterfront of, of River View and, and the, the, uh, corresponding north, north, south streets, and also on the east side. And so now they're going back to get that. It's, uh, it's, 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 it's difficult, and I understand your frustration. I absolutely do. And Lance and I, and Irv, and, and everybody, we try to get as much information as we can. We have our folks talk to them. Sometimes they get done, sometimes we still haven't gotten to it. But we'll continue to crack the whip, I guess, as best we can, you know, within reason.
Well, I, I, and again, I know that there has been a tremendous amount of debris picked up. I know that where a tree that was not mine fell on my property, and the arborist came and cut off what they could to try to save the tree, but they left everything right there.
Right.
And I know that, um, one day, they picked up eighty-eight cubic yards in four trips just at my address with my neighbor's address.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there's, there's a lot going on. I really hope that what, what we can do, we can get the message out to say, if you have debris in the back of your house, get it to the front of the house as soon as you can. If you have construction debris, you know, please get somebody to, either you get it out or you hire somebody to, I mean, that's what I'm going to have to do with part of my house. So we've, we've got to get that message across, because I don't want to see our people going out after the ninety days, and then we're going to have to be sending people bills because it was not picked up in an appropriate amount of time to be covered under the FEMA regs.
Sure. We'll, we'll have to cross that bridge, because I, I'll be frank with you. I think people will still put things out. They may prune their trees, they may do other things. And, and we don't want a dirty city, for sure. And so we'll figure out how to deal with that. I don't know if we'll send them bills or not. That'll be your decision to make. But, uh, we're trying to do the best we can, and, and, and it's a point well taken. But I think it's also mindful that we're about two and a half weeks, I think, since the hurricane. And compared to how much we've taken in and what these streets looked at, I mean, you know, I can show you tree after tree that kind of came down, big stuff. That's on the east side. That's just, I mean, every house has CD.
Well, and what I would say is, maybe that ninety days, I mean, is there any pathway to getting them to extend it, since we have three storms?
No, so, uh, let me tell you about the ninety days. I'll tell you about the ninety days. What it was is, it's a, it's a federal through the president-
Right.
-that signed a documentation that says, if you get it cleaned up in ninety days, FEMA will reimburse your city one hundred percent. It has nothing to do with the storms individually that started before. It was after Milton, and it's basically saying, and they gave, they gave the state of Florida two-hundred million dollars upfront, so you could ask for half of the money that you guesstimated that it would cost, where, you know, and there's times at other storms, we're still waiting for money from a year, two years ago. Um, it was from the president and the state to the governor. Then the governor declared which counties with the federal government were in that. We were one of them. So the ninety days didn't start till after Milton.
Okay.
We should be able to get ours in ninety days. What we're seeing now is somebody calling and one of their pile picked up after their streets already been picked up, and that pile is as green as it can be.
[laughing]
It had nothing to do with the storm, and that's what we're going to have to get out to the citizens to say, listen, this isn't for your tree service to trim it, you know, and, and our city staff did a yeoman's job of picking up before Milton on both the seven-hundred homes that were affected on Riverside Drive area and River View Bullar- River Boulevard area, to get that cleaned up. Now people are coming back and finishing or coming back from, that are, um, that are seasonal residents and finding things out. Uh, and that's, that's what's happening. It's, you know, you'll, you'll go around the city right now, and you'll see somebody put out a dresser and a, a mattress that had nothing to do with the flooding. So there's some that's going to be it, and there's some that's going to be back on the normal stuff.
And, and in my neighborhood, we're getting where the debris was picked up, and you get up the next morning and somebody's dumped something else there. So-
Mm-hmm.
-it possibly is illegal dumping going on.
Mm.
But that's something we have to deal with a little bit of at first. But I just want to say, yes, yes, ma'am, just one second. Um, I just want to say, looking at these pictures here, what, and we really didn't get a chance to say it, is what our staff did through our sanitation and others during these, this first part of Helene going into Milton was unbelievable on a Sunday morning that they all came out. And, you know, one of the things we were doing is we weren't crushing people's junk. We were crushing their lives, and I've said that before. But we were also showing them that the city cared, and we didn't wait for the debris hauler to get in. And whatever that ends up costing us, you know, if we don't get reimbursed from FEMA, that it was so unbelievable to get it done. And then all of a sudden, and even the governor in one of his press conferences said, and I heard Bradenton's the only one that got their- I heard Bradenton's the only one that got their stuff picked up before Milton was coming. So that was out there and I thought it was important that we did that. And I just wanted, you know, obviously, you know, pass along to Public Works, pass along to everybody, but those 17 sanitation employees that showed up on Sunday morning at 6:30 to start that process was unbelievable. So thank you for that. Ms. Moore.
I was just gonna say that about the late putting out, I think one of the, at least my personal, I'll just tell you my personal experience. In Milton, not Helene, we, we basically lost, at least two trees were completely uprooted and fell over, significant ones. One was a ginormous pine. There's no way we could do that ourselves. And so I just point out that we had to wait. The, the tree contractor was, you know, we were in queue, but he just was not able to get to us until literally this week. So I don't think, I mean, you can probably tell it, I'm sure, because it's either green or it's, you know, an old pine that is now all over my front, but.
It's a wildly brown.
Right. So I just feel like we also have to keep that in mind too, that I, I promise you that there is illegal dumping going on. I, I, as a matter of fact, I, I can almost virtually guarantee you that's happening. And I also think there is a little bit of, let me hurry up and put that dresser out there. But I also think that to some extent, there is just the unfortunate circumstance of if you have to hire people to help you, the line, could it sometimes be long?
It's a long line.
And at some point, if, if you had leave a tree in your backyard for 90 days plus, then you have it cut up, the tree service is gonna have to haul it off.
Right, right. Yes.
At some point we gotta draw that line.
Right, we're gonna have to draw that line and we're, we're being very sympathetic, but also, you know, I mean, you look at that tree and the vehicle that's underneath it.
Yep. I mean, some of this stuff just.
We can talk about this forever.
Yeah, sure, forever, right?
We're gonna keep processing through and we're always given the benefit of the doubt right now. And I think our administration is working through that.
For sure.
All right, moving forward, Mr. Perry.
Moving forward. Had one other matter, which is the purchase, I believe, under item 9A to finalize the authorization proceed with the purchase of 1307 Ninth Street West from RRMS Properties LLC, which is the canvas shop on Ninth Street. Council may remember that we basically got authorization to pursue negotiations. We put together a purchase and sales agreement after receiving an appraisal and agreeing to appraisal plus 10%. The seller was agreeable to that. We had some diligence to do as it relates to providing a boundary survey and making sure that there was no survey objections related to that. We did it, should be part of the package. Title commitment on the policy to ensure that we had good marketable clean title. And then I also went a step further and got an ESA, environmental survey assessment done, which I didn't wanna put in the package for different reasons, but there was no reportable environmental conditions related to that. So I just would like authorization to proceed with, 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 with closing on that deal. And it is set for closing on, I wanna say November 18th.
November 23rd, it looks.
Is it not yet?
Honor before November 23rd.
Okay, that's exactly set on November 18th.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
For the chair, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to proceed with the closing for the purchase of 1307 Ninth Street West, honor before November 23rd, 2024.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Had discussion, start the vote in Ward Four. Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Perry?
That will conclude my business, other than a congratulations to all the councilors for getting through the storm and particularly for those that had to run for reelection and the mayor.
Thank you very much.
We're heading in a very, very positive direction. And this particular storm is one of those eventualities of life that we all learn from and probably because we have great staff, a great team, great leadership, we'll get through it.
All right, so we'll start council reports in Ward Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, I would really like to thank all of our employees for the outstanding job that they've done in response to storm after storm after storm. It was evident that, how, how much our employees care about our community. And it, it is absolutely appreciated to the volunteers that came out with the cleanup efforts. There were a lot of volunteers that came out. And if, if you were not in an area that got serviced by one of the volunteer groups, I'm, I'm really sorry that you missed that because they, the mayor kept comparing them to ants, like running and going everywhere and getting everything cleaned up. I do know, I've, I've seen some comments about, well, you know, when FEMA picked up at my house, they didn't sweep up the mess kind of thing. We had, again, volunteer groups that were out in very specific areas to try to help those hit hardest, try to help some businesses get back open again, and we really appreciated that. I do though, there's, there's one volunteer that I really wanna say something about and that is Gina Brown. I don't know, when, when you got that girl, you did a good day's work, sir. She, I mean, I've, I never saw her without a rake in her hand and a smile on her face. And, I mean, there were, there were times I wasn't out there smiling. It was hot, it was miserable certain times. She was always there and just like, let's go, let's get it going. So I, I just wanna say a shout out to Gina Brown for all that she has done to try to get our community back together again. Also, moving on, Manatee High School is in the regional quarterfinals for football on November the 15th at Hocken Stadium. If you haven't caught a game yet, you really ought to come out. The, the, the team, the band and the cheerleaders would appreciate it very much so. Also want to let people know that Winter Wonderland is happening again this year on Saturday, December the 14th, starting at five o'clock. And the snow mountains are back. And let me offer my congratulations to Councilwoman Coker, Councilwoman Coachman and our mayor. It's going to be an honor to be able to continue to serve with you all. That's my report.
Okay, Ward Three.
I would like to echo your sentiments. Gina Brown was awesome, but so was Mayor Jean Brown. His motor was like an Energizer bunny running around and gentleman earlier said, you know, wore him out. I have pains in areas I didn't know I had from doing some of the work helping you and I really appreciate you coming and help in my neighborhood specifically. And it was funny, one of the debris haulers was there and couldn't, like, he was sizing us up and thought we were pickers going through debris. And he said, y'all don't look like pickers. I was like, well, no, that's the mayor and I'm a city councilman. He could not, literally took video of us, sent it back to his friends in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, who then commented to him that they couldn't believe that elected officials are out there actually doing work. So, and I know everybody in this room at some point or another volunteered. I know some were hit far harder than others and didn't have as much time, but still got out there to do it. So thank you to everybody. Thank you again. I always say thank you to our staff, our professional staff, and I'm squeezing my little stress ball that I got yesterday because I'm stressed out. But thank you again to the professional staff for everything you did in the lead up to the storm. One reason I think there's so much, honest to God, so much water coming through our lift stations is because our drains are so clean. They've never been this clean ever. And that goes to you all going out and making sure that we don't have blockages over pipes or in drains that are then gonna lead to flooding in neighborhoods that normally get, you know, if God sneezes on them, they get a flood. So I'm really happy to have that, that staff that we have now going. I'm honored to be up here with you all for at least another two years. I'll just say that. Congratulations again, Pam, Jane, Mayor. You all really make it a pleasure to be up here. I wasn't sure when I got into what I was doing, what, what I was doing. And I think we all maybe have that first initial shock and then it, you know, we don't, we generally agree, we don't always fully agree. I'm not looking at you in particular, I'm just saying, you know, but we, we, we get along and it's, that makes it like it, everyone says it's so unusual. And when they try to liken us to another, let's just say governing body in the county, I quickly correct them and make sure they know that we are collegial and respectful and friends. So, all that said, it was good to see Farm City Week being recognized as the husband of a farm girl from Ohio. I know how hard families work, how basically my father-in-law, God rest his soul, was a HVAC engineer who worked on buildings larger than ours. And then also had another full-time, extra than full-time job, which was being a farmer. That has carried over to his son, my brother-in-law. So again, when I got to go out on Ag Day with Leadership Manatee back in 2022, I couldn't, 21, 22, I couldn't believe the numbers that I was hearing about how much production is done in Manatee County. But in talking with Mr. Keane, that's definitely gonna take a strong hit this year and I worry about the future of that in this county as a result. Sadly, I would like to offer my condolences to the family of officers or Detective Jay Gal and Officer Sean Gal on the passing of their father, Jerry, passed away a couple weeks ago. And very sorry to hear his passing. I think services are this weekend at Brown and Sons, so that's all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Well, I've just echoed the sentiments that this is our first meeting since the storms and whatnot. Well, it's not our first meeting, but our first, you know, normal public meeting. And as everyone knows, I've been serving on the canvassing board, so I've not been able to participate really in any, any kind of measures or campaigning. But I do think it is safe to say, and it's just the truth, that everyone in this room was really supportive and I appreciate that. And I think part of the fun of being a part of a local governing body is that it is really a testament to how much you care about your community, that you are boots on the ground and that you feel it and touch it and see it with your own, you know, two eyes. But not to get emotional, but I will say that, so that aside, I will say that I'm very much looking forward to, you know, continuing, I think, the, the momentum that we have had and I look forward to, you know, seeing the progress that we can make in at least the next two years. What I was going to say as part of my comments was that I think that hardship also can be simultaneously opportunity. And I think that there is a lot of opportunity for us to do what we put on the back of a shirt, which is build back strong. I'm confident that we all have the, the desire to do that as a city, as, and as entire, you know, city body. I have been joking, if you'll placate me a little bit, that because of my personal situation, I'm touring the wards. I have had the pleasure to, to reside now in Ward One and I am currently residing in my short-term verbo in Ward Three. And they're, they are so different and I really appreciate, you know, I'm treating it like a learning opportunity. My husband had to tell me to basically stop it when I kept geeking out on the fact in Ward Three, there's alleys. I didn't really completely know that. People park in the alley and they walk in through their back door and it's so walkable. I walked here today. And so that's fun. And so I am gonna just take this as a learning opportunity and, and I think that it's giving me perspective on a bigger picture on, you know, what, what's good for one ward is really an opportunity to be good and supportive of all the wards. And that said, my ward was hit very hard. I look forward, I have a lot of thoughts about how to take that hardship and turn it into an opportunity, some of which I have bored, tormented, call it what you will, Dr. Burton and Mr. Perry with. And I look forward to sharing it with you all. And I'm gonna have more to come because I don't feel totally prepared to, you know, completely lay out a vision, but I am excited about it and that's the way I'm gonna treat it. And I know that we can, you know, I think we can do great things, not just for Ward Four and its rebuilding, but also as it supplants, you know, downtown and then by extension, all the wards. And I'm gonna be excited about it and hopeful.
Thank you. Ms. Coachman.
Okay, well, just, just to kinda piggyback on what you were just saying, I've said it a few times up here because I, I know I say it all the time to others. I see the city as the, as a body. And if one part of your body is injured or it's not functioning well, that impacts the whole body. So even though you might, we might be putting a lot of attention to one part of the body, it's all one city. And, and I, and I think this council and all that, all, everybody that makes up the city government feels that. At least that's what I feel. It is one city. Okay, stop. I was doing okay. But, but yes, one part of the city, if we're giving it more attention, or seems like we are, it's really for the benefit of the whole city. And I hope we can get the public to see that too. And I think some do, especially now because it seems like we're all in this together. That's for sure, that tragedy can sometimes bring people closer together. So sadly, that's true and that's okay, you know? And I just wanna also echo during the stress of three storms, really, three major events and the last one, of course, really capitalized major, you know? I can't imagine any other municipality being able to do what this city has done. And I'm gonna admit, I didn't, I didn't carry a lot of debris, like branches and stuff and, and help in that way, but I was definitely watching and cheering on how this city came together, how every person that's part of the city of Bradenton came together. And I'm just happy that I'll be up here for another four years. Mary Ann, I know we're getting up there in age, so I don't know how many more years after that.
But you're lucky because black don't crack. I've gotta deal with, you know, the aging thing.
It may not crack on the surface, but it hurts within. But anyway, I'm, I'm just gonna stop right there. So much has happened since our last meeting and I had notes to talk about, but yeah, let's look at the time. But it's just great to be here and it's great to be a part of this team.
Thank you. Ms. Coker.
I, I hate to be redundant, but I don't think it can be said enough, thank you. I mean, to the staff and to everyone for all the, I mean, just the efforts that have been made and, and it, you know, the community, I think feels, you know, there, I, I'm like Pam, I was unable to do some of the heavy lifting with the debris, but I, I will say that your efforts and those that did, it showed and I'm hearing it out in the community and obviously to all the first responders that were in harm's way. I, I mean, I just don't think we can say thank you enough. But I, I wanna keep it brief. It's been, it's, it's been a lot for all of us and I think we all have a sense of maybe a little PTSD afterwards and I think we gotta give each other grace to have those bad days and keep moving forward. But I, I am very honored to be able to start another four years. I think that the vote shows that we're doing something right at least. And I am excited about what we're doing for our community and what's ahead and, and the place what we're making for our, our children and grandchildren. So thank you.
Thank you. So, and I'll echo again with all of our staff from our police, our fire, our public works, our planning, administrative, public information, you know, we had a, we had a drone attacked by a hawk at one. We had a, we had a drone attacked by a hawk at one point, so, uh, so you just gotta have fun with the, the different things. And, and when you go through it, I mean, you know, we thought, we knew what happened with Debbie and, and, you know, some of the stuff, there was more rain events and a lot of rain over a certain time and you think, okay, how are we gonna recover from some of that with our wastewater treatment system and, and learning from that? Then all of a sudden you come in with Helene and you have, you know, up to over six feet that then gets into our water system that makes some things that happen and, and what you go through and how our water tastes and go through it. And we've had a great situation where, you know, we got water and people were giving it out and the staff from all departments was helping hand it out and work through that. And, and then, you know, when you had the flooding of that, you didn't realize that, you know, you had 700-plus homes that had some sort of water in it and you meet somebody every day that one of their homes was flooded, that whether it was from two or three inches or four or five feet in a home, that affects you, you know, just in the city. I know others in the county had things, other parts of our staff had it. But, you know, when you have inches in or feet in, everything's ruined. You can't reuse it, whether it's a Bible, whether it's a nativity set, whatever. And, you know, you just, people are, that's, people are gonna deal with for long-term. It's not, oh, well, we had a little storm, put a new window on and your house is back to normal. And that's what people don't, don't realize, you know? And there were some people that didn't realize that up in that 10, 12 days before Milton that, you know, well, I didn't have it, can you, can't you get my yard debris? Well, we were picking up, as I said, people's lives crushed in their home. And there's still people that, that you see on Facebook or around that, that have not mucked out their house because they don't have the ability in the, you know, they don't have the network, they don't have the money, they don't have it, um, to go through. So that, that's something that we have to be mindful of. And when we talk about 90 days here or there, there's gonna be some things that we'll have to do case by case and work out to help people. Um, and then we have Milton hit. And, you know, we in Manatee County had the highest sustained winds of anybody. When you looked at possibility of blowing in a hundred and 10 miles an hour, CSDK was at 85, Tampa was at 100. So when you really look at it, the different statistics are coming out. And I believe we probably had, if not tens, we had hundreds of little tornadoes that nobody ever really registered. Because you see some of the damage, there's no way that that damage happened just by the wind, the way it was. And, you know, whether it's at your home, whether it's at your high school, whether it's anywhere, it affects everything in, in our, our public yard, our works yard with a steel structure that looked like it was crumpled with nothing. You know, that had to be a little bit of a twister that kinda hit and, and went up that never registered. So, you know, it's gonna be something we're dealing with for a long time, um, and going through things. I just wanna mention a couple of groups. There's a lot of people that came out, um, but Jennifer Hoffman and Keep Manatee Beautiful and it's still coming. She called me in, um, in about, I think, a week from Monday. There's 42 people coming in from a college up north and they wanna work in the city. So as I told them, we'll find something for them to do, 42 college students that are coming here that will help some of that. So we're gonna keep working and, and, um, if you're out there and you're wondering, well, I wasn't able to help physically, I wasn't able to do anything, but you're financially able to, go to Keep Manatee Beautiful and let them out. That's important. Um, Bayside Church was another big group organization that came in really before Milton and they've done a lot of things after, but when you looked, they came into Two Rivers and Brayden Castle Park and Brayden Castle. You know, we all know about that and you know the history of that area. But until you're there eight to 10 hours a day helping people that, you know, great location, but maybe not the most, um, affluent people that, that can do things and, and, you know, the, the lady that, 90 years old, Jane, I think was her name, that lives in a great location, but she owns the trailer, but she rents the property, she wouldn't leave her house. And the women were trying to talk her out of it, get, let's get you somewhere. But there was still six inches of water in her little trailer that, you know, and getting it out. So it's just, you know, she felt, and you know, we know, we all have grandparents and parents and when they leave their house, they don't feel they're gonna come back. So she was fighting in that scenario and, um, just so proud of our staff with what we did. And the PTSD or emotions is what's hitting and that's the hard part. And when you look at people out there that are so negative, that just wanna drag us down, that's not gonna happen in our city. And I'll get emotional and I'll fight for it. And, you know, there's no, no Photoshop or photo opportunities. It's about what we do to help others and that's what our city's done. But, um, I wanna bring up, uh, Jack Van Burke, who's been sitting out there the whole time. Met Jack and I, I wanted to come up and just, come up, come up to the podium, get to talk for a minute. But, um, he's thinking about government, different things, young man, and just want him to give him a little history of himself and I couldn't do it, but. The emotional part, I think I'm, I'm tired and you get more emotional when you're tired, but, but just tell us about yourself, Jack.
Well, I'm, uh, Jack. I moved here from DC actually, it's way better. Um, recently bought a house in Lakewood Ranch, Bradenton. Um, yeah, before this, I was in the Air Force for eight years. I was a TAC P, um, ended up getting hurt, getting out, now getting my MBA at University of Florida and I'm looking to get into politics. Um, currently I'm an account executive, uh, down the street. It's a company called National Service Bureau. It's kinda like a receivables firm, sorry. And yeah, so I'm looking to make the transition. Um, love the community, love Bradenton, love the area and happy to be here.
Well, we just wanted to welcome you and thank you for coming and watching. You get to see a lot of stuff, uh, through storms and emotions and everything else. So welcome and, um, shadow anytime.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, yep. All right, so kinda just finishing off with, with some of my comments, obviously again, um, I'm gonna mention a few names, I'm gonna skip some just by it. But when you look at, you know, all the way from our public works to our sanitation, to our planning, but, um, some of us have been more with the sanitation people out there and, and James Moore's group and Dexter Dawes and, and Wesley and, you know, just when you're looking at Ollie and, you know, those guys and, um, um, I just lost his name, the best grappler we got, hands down, but, um, um, what? No, no, um, he's talking about it, he's gonna be, he's funny, so, um, no. How do you say his name? So it's like a character, but I'll think of it. Wonka, Wonka, yeah, Wonka. So, um, but those guys.
All of those guys.
All of those guys and like I said, I may have missed a few, I missed a few names, but, but those guys would run through a wall for us and they would do anything. And they're getting there at four, five, six o'clock in the morning and they'll work till, till dark. And, you know, they all came in on a Sunday morning, you know, and all the supervisors and, and, um, just when you really look at them, Leo, who lost his home two years ago. And Leo's the first one in and the last one to leave if, if you want him and whether he's hurting or not. But you just look at those guys and those are the ones fighting for the city, you know? And again, we, we see our public, we see our police, we see our fire and they do an unbelievable job every day in a dangerous situation. Those, the public works staff and, and sanitation, you don't get to see them. Um, but we see them in work and they'll still do anything. And one of the most important things to me is when, when this storm had happened and we'd cleaned up in the neighborhoods and that, and then Milton hit was about downtown and Village of the Arts and our areas that, you know, needed to be cleaned up right away to get people to back to some normalcy. And that's probably one of the biggest things, cause Village of the Arts was gonna cancel their events. But because of those staff members and what they did, they were able to have their, uh, Halloween, which they said had the most people, cause they think more people came to that cause it was clean and other neighborhoods weren't. And then they had their.
Day of the Skeleton.
Day of the Skeleton or that, but. Yeah, so those were there, but to have those because of our staff and getting things done and, and with our, the haulers, so, um, I could go on forever, but I'm trying to get through this. And then of course, my wife. I forgot to mention her last night.
It's okay.
Yep, but without her, I wouldn't be what I am and do today, so, um, and I didn't lose anything, but you just lose the emotion of what's, what's out there because we didn't lose one life in the city of Bradenton. And that's what it's about, you know? We didn't lose anything. We can fix other things. It's, it sucks, but we can fix it. The, the things about our family is what you, you think about. All right, department heads, let's move on. Any department heads? Yeah.
I don't usually talk a lot, but I just wanna kinda just reiterate and jump on that bandwagon to, to really thank our leadership and our council, our mayor, uh, Mr. Perry. Um, we had three major events happen and, and two of them back to back. And the, the leadership that we have in front of us, the leadership that's sitting in the crowd right now and the staff that's around and the hard work that was put in, I just cannot be more proud to be part of this team. And, um, I don't live in the city, but I spend a lot of time living in the city, if you know what I mean. So I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart for the leadership that we have with the council mayor and the leadership that we have with the staff behind us. So very appreciative, thank you.
Anyone else? Come on, chief.
Um, just on a practical note, we have, we're finishing up those, um, assessments of the properties that were damaged. So you may have been hearing about some of that, that should be done in about a day or two. Uh, that just helps FEMA understand the amount of damage that we've experienced in the city and will help us when things start coming in for permit. Speaking of which, please make sure everybody's getting a permit. Even though we may be waiving fees, it's important to hire licensed contractors and to obtain permits. Uh, we do have to limit permit activity on particular residents that is below flood to 50% of the assessed value. And I think that is some of what, you know, but we're gonna work with people, uh, we're gonna help them through the process. And, and I think a lot of what we saw out there, we didn't see too many that were really gonna exceed their 50% value, even with as bad as the damage looked, because it doesn't include their personal possessions. It includes mainly just anything attached to the structure. So I think we're gonna be in good shape for that, but do please make sure that if you're talking to anybody about it, that they are obtaining the permits that they need. Um, in the midst of all this, we were also implementing a new permitting program, uh, called Acela. So, um, it's a, a little bit of a bumpy ride, but we're the second weekend to it and people started applying online right away as soon as it was open. So, uh, we're, we're optimistic about it, but we still have, still have a few little things that need to be worked out as we go along the way. If you hear from anybody who's having difficulty obtaining permits, uh, particularly if it's damage related, we wanna make sure we get right on those. Please have them contact me directly and I'll make sure it gets into the right hands and then we take care of it as soon as possible. Um, so, and again, uh, to reiterate, congratulations to everybody who, um, got, uh, another chance at sitting at the dais. Um, I know our, our, uh, commu, code enforcement is glad they don't have to pick up political signs anymore, you know? Now we're picking up snipe signs for illegal contractors. So, um, we're staying busy with that, we're staying on top of that. But congratulations and we're glad to have you.
So I just wanna say thank you to Robin, your staff, the code enforcement, all the way down with Greg and that, because you guys had to go out and do some, the windshield things right afterwards and so you were all there to do that. You're catching some grief where people are, think we're out to get them, we're not out to get them, we're out to help them and we're finding ways, you know, through our building department and that, if there's opportunity not to get to that 50%. If it's there, it's there. We've got to make sure it's safe. Um, and you had mentioned something about with the fraud and snipe signs. Um, we had an incident early on in one of the parks where we were cleaning and, and, um, Brayden Castle Park, there was a gentleman there that was, uh, doing something and, and we had just heard the fraud statement going through and the governor had said it and, um, through all of his, um, meetings that we'd seen. And this man was talking and I said to him, I said, who are you with? Well, I'm with FEMA. I said, well, do you have an ID? Cause that was the whole thing, show your ID. He wouldn't show his ID. So we had some police officers in the park, they wouldn't, and he wouldn't show his ID to the police officers either. And he was detained for about three hours, but he wouldn't show his ID. Well, they're supposed, that's the first thing any FEMA representative is supposed to do, is show their ID. And he ended up being legitimate. He was a subcontractor of a subcontractor of FEMA. But if they didn't tell him what to do right, wasn't our fault. And, you know, it was something that, that I hope people realize that we were not trying to pick on anybody, but we were trying to protect the people. And even the, the homeowner was like, it was kinda weird that he wouldn't do it. So we've gotta keep that up and I'm sure the chief could make, make some comments to that, even if there's been more fraud, so.
Yeah, we were working with the Florida Department of Emergency, Emergency Management and they had subcontractors. They each had a, an ID badge, had the city's logo on it, they had a letter from the building official. They also had the building official's card to contact them directly. And in fact, the building official went out this weekend and talked to a few people who were chasing people off their properties. So we, um, we're, we're doing what we can to get out there and get the word out. And, uh, hopefully all of that though finishes up this week and we're on to just permitting.
All right, thank you.
I wasn't gonna come up, not feeling very well today, but, um, everything you all said and, and then some, it's great to see a wonderful group of folks that I've been working with all these years and know you guys are gonna be sitting there, um, for years to come. As excited as I am about that, I'm probably more excited that I can still arrest potheads in, uh, Bradenton. Um, and so I hope that gets out. Uh, um, yeah, that, that would've been really bad, so I'm really happy about that. So put, put the word out, we certainly will. Lots of stuff, um, I'm not gonna bore you with it today, uh, but I promised my, my staff that I would mention, we, we missed the meeting to tell you that we were accredited. Um, so that was great news for us. Everything you need to see about BPD and what's been going on is, is on our Facebook. We actually, um, got 14,000 more, um, viewers, friends, however they call it, over the storms and we now have a reach on BPD's Facebook of 11.5 million people. Um, really incredible. And I'll tell you, this isn't just from the PD's perspective, it's from the, the entire city. Uh, it, it makes me feel really good, makes me feel like a big girl in a big girl city. Um, I used to be in a big city. I feel like I'm in a big city now when I get calls from all over, um, from Tampa, from even some of the smaller ones, but from some of the big ones about how we came together as a city and responded to the storm and, and everything they saw, what we put out, what we provided our people. Um, I got calls from other places, hey, what are you guys doing about gas? What are you doing about, um, different things? And, and that makes me really proud to, to know that as a city, people take note of us and, and think that we're, we're doing it right. You know, and that, that came from all over the state. One more thing I wanna say, um, I have a, a detective today getting on a plane from Minnesota because throughout all this, and, and Mayor, you'll appreciate that, we have that elder unit that seems like you and I, we're the only ones kind of excited about it. Um, but we, we push full force and, and we've really been very active with my, my two folks working that. Um, we had a, a very unfortunate case here in, in the city. Gentleman had wired tens of, tens of thousands of dollars to somebody who he thought was gonna maybe marry him someday. Um, we knew that wasn't the case. And as, as become commonplace, we start making phone calls all over the country and we can't get help. So we're now getting into the position of putting my folks on planes and sending them out there. We went out there with a search warrant and, um, found the 44-year-old man, who was obviously not the, the woman he thought he was gonna marry. Um, but with, with the search warrant, um, they have probably found about 15 more victims, tens of thousands of dollars. It's gonna be a, a huge case that, um, they don't really get recognition for because it's gonna be people all over the country. But, um, just to call out, thanks for supporting that initiative and thank you all for supporting it through budgeting and whatnot. I, I really think that that unit's gonna put us on the map and it's, it's gonna be a focus in this state and in this country in the years, years to come. So, um, Detective Krulow, by the way, so he's on a plane now, but a great job and I'll have more information on that afterwards. But that's all and, and congratulations y'all again. It's really a privilege working with y'all.
Mr. Perry, anything else? Well, no, just congratulations to, to all of us here, but also to our whole county, whether it's City of Palmetto, Holmes Beach, Anna Marie Island, Bradenton Beach, I think they had one maybe, or was that, I don't know, but, but, you know, the, those cities have a lot of recovering to do out on the islands too, that the, you know, and again, I don't, I know people, as you get older, you get more emotional, but, but I think when you're tired and you're just stressed over, I don't know, what's it been, six weeks now, seven weeks or more? And, uh, you know, patience is gonna be a virtue of all. And, you know, patience is going to be a virtue of all of us, as well as the community. But again, we've done a yeoman's job so far, and we're going to keep doing it. And, and I appreciate the citizens seeing that and knowing that, you know, we do care about our community and we'll be there for you, so.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing?
Yes.
Happy anniversary to Janey and Scott Rudisil. Seventeen years of wedded bliss.
Congratulations. All right, thank you, and we'll be adjourned. Happy, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, so, yeah.
We have a lot to be thankful for.